Welcome to the Town of Norfolk Planning Board Meeting, March 18, 2014. Please be advised that this meeting may be video and audio taped. Also, we have Steve McLean, our chairman, who's just going to be a little bit delayed, and Jeff's coming in just on time.
(inaudible)
First on the agenda, at a little past 7:30, we have the continued public hearing for MacArthur Ave., lot subdivision with Landmark Engineering. Paul, you're going to present?
(mn)
You have a microphone for...
Pretty good. How are you, Jeff?
(inaudible) Well, this is for that one lot on MacArthur Avenue. And what I've done on this plan, this is the first page of the, basically, the locust plan. I have put on here that 200-foot circle that was asked last month, and I put the build factor on here with the setbacks for the zoning setbacks on it. I've also put the 200-foot circle on, and I've shown the 200-foot circle on that lot on Hunter Avenue. And as you can see, that 200-foot circle will not fit against MacArthur Avenue. This is the lot lines that are here. This is the lot line on MacArthur Avenue. And this 200-foot circle can't front on to MacArthur Avenue. This is the private roadway we'd like to put in for this lot. And originally, we showed the roadway going across the entire lot. This is what we would prefer to do. It's about 120 feet long. I've shown where the driveway entrance would be to this lot. This would provide vehicle traffic or for emergency vehicles to come up into the driveway and a turnaround to back out and get back out to Lake Shore Drive. We have reviewed a lot of the paperwork that's been filed on this MacArthur Avenue, and this is basically a private way. It's not a public way. It has never been accepted by the Town of Norfolk. And it doesn't have the correct width to have a roadway on it. So this is a 16-foot roadway coming in here with that driveway. There's nothing to say that this MacArthur Ave. has never been abandoned, and it's basically a private drive, private way.
Last time you were here, I think you were saying that, or one of the abutters was saying that that road sort of exists, and he uses it as a driveway today. Is that true?
Yes, this house lot right here.
Right.
He has a parking area
Right.
in this area that he drives up and uses as a parking area for his cars.
Yep.
And we wouldn't prevent him from not using that. That would still be accessible.
Paul, on the private way itself, where does the, where's the property line? Does Paul in the middle, or?
Oh.
When you're calling it a private way, a lot of times it's centerline.
Yeah. But this was a subdivision that was done back in 1945.
Okay.
And it was an approved subdivision in 1945. And this was a roadway at that time, and it's never been abandoned as, you know, as a public drive.
I guess my question is, this proposed driveway, is it all on the property owner's land?
(inaudible).
The proposed drive or private road?
Yeah.
Whatever you want. What are you terming it as?
It's in that 40-foot layout
Okay.
of MacArthur Ave.
So it's just, it's a ancient road or unaccepted? What's the status of it?
Well, it was approved before zoning in Norfolk. And so this roadway or this access way still exists.
Okay. How does Gino or Tom, if you want to chime in on this, can you tell me?
It sounds like it would be a private way. Was subdivision in effect in 1945, or was this done by another process? Do you know offhand?
I don't know for sure. It was a plan that was done in 1945, and it was approved.
But it sounds like a private way, never accepted as a public way. And so would not need to be abandoned, as that term is used, as it pertains to public ways. It's probably likely, without seeing the deeds and stuff, I don't know, but they, you were asking about if it's on their half of the private way, but I don't think it needs to be if the, because most likely those deeds in private ways like that provide the right to everybody along there to use the whole thing, even though they only own to half to their midpoint. But, so that's...
So, yeah, we're in a position therefore, if it is a private way, that the planning board has to make a finding that the way, when it comes to that point, is adequate for the intended use. So the way most planning boards handle it, they actually sort of reach an informal agreement in advance as to what the improvement should be. And then, once the improvements are made, then the board can acquiesce to allow that to be frontage for the lot, so.
But not necessarily ever meet the town road standard?
It's just a finding that it's adequate for the intended use. And I think one of the concerns the board had was, what is the intended use? What's the potential for extension? And we discussed that the last time. So if it is only forever to be used by one lot, that's the basis of the board's determination of what needs to be adequate there.
Okay. Steve, not Steve.
Jeff.
Tom. He's not wearing a tie because he can't take anything home.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, I mean, I think it's more complicated because of the issue with the slope. That's really what I'm trying to, you know, work through. I think the first part of your presentation, it talked about MacArthur in a broader context in terms of the other segment of MacArthur beyond this particular parcel. I'd like to discuss that a little further, just so that I can fully understand what the pros and cons are of accessing that property from the other direction.
You mean accessing it from this?
Mm-hmm.
Well, if we were going to access this lot from Hunter Avenue, we would have to extend the Hunter Avenue out to MacArthur, and then we would have to provide a roadway all the way around to get to this point. Because this is really the easiest access to this lot is right here. Because this is such a slope, this is basically a hole here, and it would be a tremendous expense to try to get a driveway in here or around to this point. So, I mean, this is the easiest access to this lot.
And remind me, the corner lot that's off of Hunter, right?
There's a lot here.
Yeah, and the one just below that?
This one?
Yeah, those are both off of Hunter that you get to those?
This is off of Hunter that they access.
And the other one you appointed.
Is that on your first clip? Let's see if you remember how far out we pulled that one. Okay, sorry.
I mean, these lots can access from Hunter Ave.
And that's how they access now?
Well, there's no houses here.
Oh, okay.
I mean, this was basically would be one lot if it was ever developed. It's four lots, but they're like 50-foot frontage. So you'd have to, and plus you have Populatic Lake back here. And, I mean, the access here, the pavement stops about in this area. This would have to be extended out with a turnaround to get access to these lots.
And the in-between?
In here?
Mm-hmm.
These are all fronted on Lake Shore Drive. There's one house here, there's one house here, and there's one other one.
And how many feet is that roughly from the 90-degree over to the access to that parcel?
To this point, or?
Yeah, yeah.
This is for... About 540 feet to get to this point where it's accessible versus 120 feet.
And what's the grade again from the, coming up from Lake Shore?
This line is the existing.
Yep.
And we were proposing a 12% grade to get to that lot.
Wow.
And how about from the other direction?
Well, that would come in here.
Hunt is straight up as it stands.
Yeah, and it would have to be a 12% grade all the way down to it.
So it's probably plateauing.
I see.
So I guess one of the questions is whether we feel MacArthur is not an option for any future potential planning growth that could happen over there. Because it seems as if access to this proposed lot, it makes sense. The question is, have we exhausted that it's not access for any other possible growth along that corridor?
What's the depth of the lots down to the lake there, Paul? Up on the back of Hunter?
It's over 160, 170 feet.
60 times, what'd you say, 50 feet? Is that in total of the lots, or why were these, because it's some really funky little lots over there?
Yeah, these have 50-foot frontage
Okay.
along here.
Is it all in common ownership? Is it one?
I think it's all in common ownership.
Okay.
Don't they drop off pretty dramatically
Yes, they do.
down to the, so is there even practically enough land area to do anything with those?
It would be very tough to put a house on there, just because you've got the lake back here. So you've got the 100-foot buffer zone from the lake, which gives you approximately 60 feet to work with here. Plus you have a 50-foot frontage, it gives you about 10 feet.
50-foot.
A property that could be used without going to conservation, but you'd have to go back into...
Would you allow for a setback?
You'd have to have a 50-foot setback.
Okay. Are you really sliding it into one tiny?
Right, and this, as Gino says, this drops like a rock
Okay.
down to the lake.
I don't think his proposal changes the condition of access to those lots down at the other end of the private way. It's a problem getting in there. It's a problem today, and if someone wants to develop those lots in the future, it'll be a problem then. So there's nothing he's proposing that would change the degree of difficulty of accessing those lots.
It's basically one lot.
Lot, okay.
Yeah.
Four people.
Excuse me, yeah.
Right, okay.
Well, it wasn't here before, so, I mean, yeah, I have a ton of questions, but I don't know if they're relevant.
Well, fire away, because you know what? There's the abutters here and everything else, maybe they have the same concerns.
It's a one-lot subdivision, so there's a second lot left. That's, what's the intention of the second lot?
Back here?
No, no, you said it's a one-lot subdivision, so there...
This is the lot.
And where's, and you put a required circle on another piece of land, is that part of the project?
That's where you weren't here, Andrea, before. They were worried about bringing, or cutting the road short, and whether they were cutting out two lots.
Right. Well, one-lot subdivision is a subdivision of a piece of, to subdivide, you have to have more than one.
Mm-hmm.
So he has, what's the remaining land?
That's not part of the equation, those other two lots.
There's a house on this lot now.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, and the reason I put this 200-foot circle on here was just to show that this 200-foot circle would not have frontage on MacArthur.
So he has his access already in place.
Off of Hunter Ave.
And you've already checked out, I mean, 12-foot, a 12%, grade is huge.
That's steep.
So, you know, that's a huge...
It exists today, and, but one of the abutters is using it today.
As a driveway.
Yep.
So, but you would be formalizing it.
Yep.
And you'd be formalizing it to some standard that is unknown to, you know, the board. So you looked into this other paper street that comes into the back, and that can't be any better.
That's the 500-plus. And the reason why he looked into it at the direction of the board was to see if we were basically precluding future development. And what he showed you with the two circles before was because he can't fit another circle, so we're really not blocking off a lot on the top side of that circle.
Are you talking about, is it something with an S?
Why don't you point to the lots we were talking about where you didn't get another lot?
I'm looking at this thing down here. What's this called?
Yeah. Oh, that's, that's a...
You already explored that.
Well, we talked about it.
It's heavily wooded.
It's a paper street, again, it's heavily wooded, there's no roadway on that.
It's not developed at all.
It's a 13% grade?
It may not be a grade problem so much as, you know,
Does it exist?
forestation, I mean, you'd have to...
Flat Stanley, yeah, it's Flat Stanley.
Quite a few trees to...
Flat Stanley?
I do remember Flat Stanley. It's a good book.
How long, how far away is that?
You did look at that one.
You did, okay, forget it. Forget it, forget it. You're coming in late, but I wanted to...
Yeah, no, it's just a 12% grade. I mean, I sat here calmly saying, a street with, what is our normal grade, six, three, four?
Yeah, six to eight.
Six to eight, and I calmly said, oh, 9%, that's not much different from 8%, but it's actually, it's actually causing a lot of erosion down the grade that's not getting caught, because the house lots haven't been put in place yet. So they haven't been, the curbs are in place, but, but...
Where is that? I'm sorry?
It's pretty close to my house, so it's on my dog walk. But what, so a 12% grade is a very serious matter for you guys to be considering.
Well...
So is it, does it make it a practi, is it enough to say it's not practical access?
For, as a, what effectively is a driveway access?
Don't you need a road in order to have a subdivision?
Yes, it's a road that looks like a driveway. Legally, it's a road, but dimensions that it would be improved to, again, it's the board's finding that it's adequate for the intended use. So I think we're coming to the position that the intended use can only be one house.
Is it defendable that it could, is it defendable, if they made a decision today that it's only one lot, is it defendable in the future if another lot needs the access? Because you've gone into a place you've never been before.
I guess if somebody were to come in and try to create a second lot, then, once again, it would be presented to the board, and the board would make a second finding of whether it's now adequate for the newly understood intended use, so.
Well, I'm glad I don't have to vote on it.
Well, I mean, I don't disagree with Andrea in terms of her concern with the slope. And, you know, I may be close to giving up in terms of other options here available, but I am a bit concerned that the director of the DPW, you know, that he's concerned, and ultimately, if I'm not mistaken, he would need to recommend to the board of select to correct that it be...
Bob's here, actually in the crowd tonight. Maybe we can talk to him as well. Bob's here.
I'm here.
Bob, I'd like to hear from you in one second, if you could come up separately. Jeff, could you announce this?
Yeah.
Quick public service announcement.
As Mr. Chipman has an interest in this matter, he has suggested, I think wisely, that I notify everyone that the applicants for both 106 Main Street and 108 Main Street have requested a continuance until our next meeting. So we will not be proceeding with the public hearing this evening for 106, 108 Main Street.
Just didn't want you sitting here all night, folks.
Should we schedule another time?
Well, we're in the middle of a hearing right now. You can't anyway, until the time...
We have to open it and schedule it.
So, just, again, out of courtesy to the folks' time.
Apologize for that. I know people try to schedule these things, work them into their calendars, so, so we'll see. We'll let you know as soon as possible in terms of when the public hearing will be continued.
Thanks, Jeff. So back to the MacArthur Ave issue. Bob McGee, DPW director, Bob, if you could talk close to the mic, or Don is going to yell at you.
I listened to this on television a little bit, and it caught my interest. I wasn't here at the last meeting. And when the consideration is to make this a public road, I can tell you that the Public Works is in no rush to make this an accepted street. But I did have a couple of ideas, and I'd like to explain it. Mike, just, maybe it's better to go to the answer and maybe work back why you can't do something, because I just, I don't know your rules and regs as well as, of course, the board members. But I just put this up off our GIS, and this shows the street from Grove Ave. going down gradient to where it catches up to Lake, just like the drawing here, but maybe you can see it a little clearer, I don't know. But it's approximately 900 feet is the take that I got. And I was thinking, just, again, go right to the answer, we have an eight-inch water main existing up here, and we have a 12-inch water main existing down there. And one of the things water systems love is looping. And I thought it would be a great idea somewhere in the future, certainly couldn't afford it right now. If we could loop this water, there would be an advantage to the DPW. So, again, getting right to the answer, I see this lot is anxious to be developed. I know that there's a driveway over here on this existing lot, and it's just a dirt situation. If it would be like what Andrea said, a 12% slope, maybe even steeper at some, it could probably be graded to something less than that. For these people to come up here and just do a short stint into here, it's no big deal, because they know how to navigate it, and there's only two people doing it. But to open this up to the public and have them going down, and you've got ice conditions and stuff, it just wouldn't be a real advantage for Public Works, and they certainly wouldn't want to invest money into making this a public way with infrastructure and so forth. So I was thinking that if this road could be assumed, whatever the word, correct word is, to the centerline by all property owners, if it isn't already, and we could have this as an easement for our water someday in the future, we could put a water main down, then the real concern is this person can then probably put up a driveway to wherever the entrance to this was, providing that they're in partnership here and there's no conflict. This get graded out for any kind of emergency, just a little bit better than what it is right now. I talked to the fire chief, and he agreed that, you know, if we haven't been down here and needed with a fire truck in the last thousand years, probably not going to do it in the next three years. But if there were to be a situation where maybe we have some breakaway posts here, don't invite traffic down here, but grade it. And eventually, someday, we can come down and have the right, because it is an easement, to put a water main in and to loop our water system. Then the only other concern is if this lot here, because I think this little house here is accessed off of Grove, it really doesn't have a need for a driveway here. But this lot here ever got developed, they could probably do something similar here, and just pave a driveway down to here, live under the same agreement, and we don't have to maintain it. And I would ask why not? So if you're going to make the investment to get a driveway up here, what we'd ask you to do is keep that bulldozer coming up here and shape this a little bit. Don't develop it into a full-blown road that we can put binder down or any kind of pavement, but maintain it that in the event that we did have some kind of emergency, we did have to go down here, that we could go down there in a car. But in the meantime, what you do is you get up here and you have like, you know, the four-by-four timbers or the eight-by-eight timbers, you put them in the ground somewhere up in here, maybe three of them, and you plant, and you cut them like in half or three-quarters of the way through, and you plant it. In the event, in the emergency, in the event that there was an emergency and a fire truck, all it has to do is hit it with its bumper, it breaks, and it can go down here. But it's a visual barrier for anybody else trying to get down there. Another thing you can do is just put bullds here, but then again, how would you move them if you had an emergency? So I just, I just thought I'd throw that out there and see if we could work backwards. And why can't you do that? I don't know.
Just a question, and I haven't had a chance to actually see this roadway myself, I normally try to, is, what's the current status of that roadway? Is it forested, or is it...
I've been in a handful of communities, and it sounds like it goes to the, you know, it's an undeveloped road. You can see it on the map, somebody has it on its map, so it's on Master GIS, or somebody recorded this with the town some time ago.
So this isn't any worse than, say, Toils End Road down the back of Antelope Circle?
I only went up to the lot, but I don't know how much farther it's cleared, but that's in front of the lot.
There is an existing cart path that runs all the way up to Hunter Ave.
Okay.
I mean, you can drive down there in your car in the summertime. You wouldn't want to do it in the wintertime.
So therefore, considering something like the idea that Bob is saying, then it's not a major clearing job on behalf of the applicant?
We've never accepted, it's not recognized by the state as being accepted, we've never accepted any state's funds.
So it's not on your inventory list.
We don't have to worry about those ramifications, you know, then we'd be responsible for paving the whole thing, possibly. This is another thing where maybe in the future someday, it would be a betterment where the people would want to have a road there, then they chip in half, and maybe would chip in half as a betterment process, and then we brought it up to standards for acceptance, but that seems unlikely. It's mostly a peaceful neighborhood. Is there anybody that wants it to be a road?
Well, let's put it out to the abutters first. You guys, are you all set for now? Let's hear what they have to say?
I just, I do one quick question. So if it's developed, as we're talking about with this 12% slope for just this short distance, it's still considered a road, a public road, even though its intended use is really more as a driveway? Or is it considered a driveway?
It would be a private.
It would be developed as a private driveway?
Because a public road has to be accepted.
Private road, as a private road, right, because, but a public road has to be accepted.
It has to be a private road, or else the lot has no frontage. Has to be a road.
But a private road can be maintained by the individual and not have to be maintained by the town.
Yes.
Bob's too expensive.
So it is a road we're looking at, but a private road? That's our terminology that we're looking at potentially?
A lot has to have frontage on a road.
Okay.
As opposed to...
A private drive.
Or when we were in an early discussion about a private road somewhere else in town, this is a pre-existing roadway
Right.
prior to zoning.
Right.
So, can we, Don, did you have another mic, or are you only working with one tonight?
That one.
Can you pull that?
One on the table.
Oh, you can grab a mic on the table?
I can score, that's fine.
Okay. Just say, you name an address for the record, and...
Sure, hi, I'm Tony DeFilippo, 66 Lake Shore Drive. I'm the abutter right down there, exactly, right down on the corner. And last time, I mean, the abutters were told years ago, we said this last time, that we thought it was an abandoned road, and it was given to the abutters, and it sounds like it is not. My preference would be to put an actual road in there. I mean, not even a quarter mile down the street from me, there's a one-house development, a road was put in for that one house. And I would say, if they did it for that, why wouldn't you do it for this? Because my concern would be if we did put something in there, you know, I would want the town to maintain it. I would want them to plow it, I would want them to sand it, especially if it's a 12%, grade going in there. I am not for, you know, a private driveway or a private road. If it's, you want to build a house, fine, you have the right, but then I think it should be a road and maintained by the town.
Okay. Now, also, you have utilized this roadway?
For the past 25 years, and I'm going to get some legal counsel, see, since I'm the owner, it's been using it, what does that mean?
But you've also been driving up it, or just seasonally?
Oh, no, I've been driving up all year. If you look, I got pictures on my phone. I clear it, it's sanded right now, so I can get up and down there. I've been using it... I've been using it for twenty-five years, up to about sixty, seventy feet and then it stops. So, I can get into my drive.
Questions, Bob?
So, if, I guess I'm just curious, if somebody else develops it and maintains it and still allows you all the access you've had, I don't understand what your sticking point is.
What guarantee is they're gonna maintain it and plow and what's the guarantee for me? I don't know.
Again, can I ask a question?
But of course.
Because I, I have, I'm in middle ground here, so don't think I'm biased anyways, I don't know who owns it or I've never even met you before, so. But you've, you're appreciating the privilege of using a driveway now, but you wouldn't wanna see these people do it. This would just be a paved driveway, probably to this expense, I would think.
To me, it's a road, a dirt road that I'm using to get to my drive.
But you already have a driveway and parking in the front.
It's, it's a cement platform, correct.
So, that what you have here is not like a recorded plot plan with a deeded driveway or anything like that? It's, most houses don't have the privilege of two driveways. And I'm not, I'm just wondering, maybe I'm wrong, but I, I'm just wondering why you'd, why you'd care. It's like peaceful out there and most people would want it to stay rural and not, you know, have through traffic and right next to your window have teenagers run down there with, you know, on prom night.
Well, again, I've been there twenty-five years, about here, you know, kids have been using this for a while now, for, for years. There's barrel, there's metal barrels up there, they go, they, they don't cause any trouble, they go, they drink a little bit, they leave. And someone else said, you know, the cars can't pass down there because, because police patrol that occasionally, they come right down. So, so it is passable by a vehicle. But again, I, I'm just saying, you know, if, if we're gonna put a house there, I, I, my personal opinion is I think we should put a road.
One of the things that are very unattractive about making this a public road is that when you sand a road like this and it, and it does happen, we sand a lot, you gotta back up the road, things like that because of the grade and so forth. This wouldn't be a fun road, you'd have to put in some kind of drainage or you'd have to do something off to the side. So, the expense is there and I just, I just wanna get that out, so whatever happens. And bringing up water and grading and.
Yes, Mr. Pyren.
For twenty-five years, you've been maintaining the road?
Yes, up to like sixty, seventy feet.
Right, so you're pretty well aware of what maintenance is required, right?
Yeah.
What is it?
It is a dirt road, you know, I, I don't plow it, I, I snow blow it in the wintertime. You know, I have gravelled it and put crushed stone down occasionally because when it rains with the grade, it washes right down into Lake Shore Drive. Occasionally, I've been shoveling it right back up in, in there, so, I mean, that's what I've been doing for the past.
I would think you could partner with your new neighbor though and, you know, find an, an agreement that would work out for both of you and might make your life better that you're not doing all that work by yourself.
Again, personal preference, I, I road, you know, town in Norfolk, accepting it and maintaining it.
So, excuse me, and I apologize, I don't have your name.
Oh, Tony, it's okay, yeah.
So, in terms of your frontage, okay, as, you know, legally recorded Registry of Deeds, how is your, how is your frontage recorded, on MacArthur or on?
Lake Shore.
Lake Shore.
Correct.
Okay, now, do you have, you have a driveway off of Lake Shore in addition to the, the roadway that we were discussing?
It's, it's more like down front, it's a cement platform, we can park two or three cars. It's not like a driveway like you, you think of it.
It's a distance from your house?
Yeah, yeah, I gotta walk up eighteen, nineteen stairs that are three feet wide because I'm on a hill. It's very slow, as you know.
Tony, would you be supportive of Bob McGee's proposal at some time in the future to run a water main down there?
I, that's up to the town.
Yeah, and can I hear from, thank you, Tony? Any other abutters here or people that wanna speak on this? Just your name and address?
Cindy Martin, sixty-nine Priscilla Ave or seventy-seven Priscilla Ave?
Seventy-seven on this map?
Yeah, seventy-seven on that map.
Okay.
Well, my question is, how can you put a, a private driveway on property you don't own? Because I don't believe that if you looked at the Registry of Deeds, you would see that, that property is owned by, do you know what I mean? It's like, they don't own, between my property line and Tony's property line, they own behind our houses. So, they don't own that strip of land that they propose to put a private driveway on.
I was making the assumption, Art Gino, go ahead.
Well, I can't answer definitively without seeing the deeds and such, but generally in this type of situation, when there's a private road and all the abutters have the right to use that road, they also, what comes with that right is the right to make improvements on it, so that's, that's how they would have that, that right.
Those rights, though, are very limited. You can only do improvements to make it passable. When I was on the board in Sharon, we had a very similar thing, although it was a full subdivision going in behind a private way. We required the applicant to upgrade the private way and the abutters to that private way sued and won because the extent of the improvements that both the board and the applicant wanted to do, the abutters felt that it impinged upon their property rights on the current character of the street and the court upheld that position. So, he had to cut the subdivision and back down by a certain number of lots. So, you can do improvements to a road you don't own, but you can't go in and do significant cuts and fills and affect the access to abutting properties and that type of thing.
So, that can be actually viewed two different ways then? Because going on a full bore roadway, then looping around from Hunter and back could actually have a pretty unintended consequence versus, I kinda like look at it, in this case, like when you're putting a water system in a town, you kinda pull it a little further and a little further each time as things get developed and then eventually it hooks together. And that's the way I was looking at this, this roadway, you know, from that perspective.
I didn't see the changes being proposed significant in the terms of what you just defined from that court case that you cited. It doesn't seem like they have a significant amount of cut or fill, it's pretty much following the same profile but basically grading it out, if you will. So, I'm not sure, I mean, what you're feeling is?
I was more, I was more responding to the question of, of what rights do they have to improve a, a way that they don't own? And they have the rights to make it passable, quote-unquote.
I mean, this is kind of uncharted or murky area for me, I don't know for anyone else on the board, mainly because it's pre-zoning road and not as schooled as, as other areas.
Down in Marshfield has a whole pro, has a whole section attached, there's subdivision regs about upgrading private ways prior to zoning. It's common in a lot of towns.
Well, past compositions of this board have had to deal with improving private ways in town. And, you know, it's always been in agreement with the parties. But I, you, you have a, do you have a sense of whether or not he has the legal right to do this? Don't you need to know that he can access the lot?
We have what we have from Gino.
But he, you didn't look at the deeds? So, that's just his, that's just his best guess?
Hi.
Sorry, I'm late.
Hey.
Agenda number one. I would almost think the board should request like a title of opinion.
I hope you got my email.
A what?
A title of opinion on the right of way. Who owns it?
In the, in the past?
It seems like it would make sense.
In the past, the owners on the, on the sides approaching the project were part of the discussion and it was a mutually acceptable plan.
Would you essentially have both of them here tonight?
Right, but, I mean, drainage, pavement, curbs? I imagine that's stuff you're talking about.
I might ask you, could you point to where your lot is on that diagram?
Oh, it's right in front of the, sorry.
It's right here or?
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure.
So, what I'm saying is, this is my property line.
Yep.
This is the property line for the, the lot behind. That property line stops here. This is.
That's a road.
That's the road.
Right.
Not a private driveway.
Right, but as a butters to the road from what Tom was saying, any one of you has the right? To improve that road, to make it passable. So, that's where they gain that right to improve.
Oh, well, because they're, but, but they don't even abut that.
Any abutter to that private road, any abutter to that private road.
And it doesn't matter where, okay.
Yeah.
The other thing, in case some of the board members aren't familiar, there is a past precedent and there's no reason you can't vary it, but the past precedent has always been that the road has to be improved across the entire frontage of the lot. Or at least for the required frontage in the district.
Yeah.
The idea being that because the road is providing you frontage, it should be improved to a road status sufficiently long to provide frontage, not just to access the lot. So, there's nothing to say you can't change that precedent, it's not a matter of law, but that has been the precedent, yeah.
So, you think the entire frontage, you do the entire frontage of the lot?
Well, at least to the minimum frontage required in the district.
And they only have minimum frontage?
They may have a little extra.
Yeah, I think they probably do.
Yeah, this is one hundred and eighty-one, or two hundred and thirty-something, plus three hundred, about three hundred feet.
Yeah, so you wouldn't need to do the whole thing.
What about Bob, I'm gonna put you back on those odd seat here. What about if you, for easements that you need, okay, for future looping of water and connecting all of this? What, what if you consider doing the maintenance on that if it was paved?
I don't follow you.
The plowing, the sanding?
Right, what about the building of it though? The construction of it, the, the investment into that? How does it, how do we get to a, an approved street, who pays for that?
I'm guessing that no matter what, the applicant was ready to build the roadway.
Are you talking, I'm sorry, just up a certain amount?
Right, but them providing those easements that you'd, you'd want for future potential looping things and water access? Because this would be, if you, if you got the easements you need, say, to loop the water?
Right.
Okay? You'd kinda trade that off, i.e. plow it in the winter, sand it. I'm, I'm trying to, I don't know if like, say, on, on Tony's concerns back here, if, if it's the, the maintenance aspect.
But he maintains it now.
I know, I understand he maintains it now, but if there's a roadway that's coming in there, is it, is it the fact that, that, you know, it's getting developed or is it the fact that it's, you know, a maintenance thing that you'd rather have someone else do?
Again, if it's a road maintenance thing, that I think the town should.
Yeah, I'm trying to find the meat, middle ground here when the town might jump in.
And, and I'm gonna circle back because I still haven't given up on the idea of accessing from the other direction. And I guess what I'd like to do is to talk about the amount of roadway in both scenarios coming from?
Hunter.
Hunter as well as from Lake Shore. And I'd like to hear from you, Bob, in terms of whether or not that situation is any better if in fact the approach is from Hunter. And when we do that calculation, I'd like to include, you know, what Tom has offered here, that typically the roadway would extend across the entire frontage. Because, you know, I, I think that that is a reasonable consideration as we work towards some type of solution here to this problem. So, I guess first, could we redo those calculations if in fact that frontage was paved, the entire frontage? From both directions, can we, can we do that?
Yeah, we can do that.
I mean, do we need, can we do it here?
Well, what do you, you're at a hundred and twenty on one end and what did you say that we were adding, five eighty or something?
It was about five hundred and eighty feet, I think back to this point.
Right, okay, so you're talking about seven hundred feet.
Any access has to be on that edge of the property in terms of where the actual driveway?
Because of the topography.
Just because of the.
Just to be fair about it, I'm just, you know, trying to be objective here. So, it's about five eighty coming at it that way. Now, if you had to pave the entire frontage from Lake Shore, even though your access was at the edge of the first?
That would be about three hundred and seventy-five feet.
Is this in our one district, Paul?
Yes.
So, it's one fifty, the frontage?
Yes.
Different, so, I guess, so now we're talking about a difference of maybe a hundred and twenty-five feet, something like that. Now, Bob, in terms of the, the slope and those issues, how do they compare in terms of coming at the property from the Hunter side?
From the high side?
Yeah.
And, but I'm, I'm really not sure what you're getting at. So, you're just, what you're suggesting is pave this all the way down to a point?
He's wondering if it's more advantageous to the town to pave from that end versus paving from.
The concern with the slope, isn't it most significant in that red shaded area between the driveway and Lake Shore Drive? Isn't that where the, the slope issue is the greatest or does that slope?
Basically, from about here down, it's the twelve percent. After we get by this point, it slips off.
That's the high point?
Yeah.
That's the high point?
No, the high point is, the high point just keeps coming. But it's, it's relatively flat compared to this steep slope down through here.
So, we haven't climbed the hill when we got to the beginning, the red is?
All the way at Hunter.
This is the existing right here.
So, it just gets worse?
It gets, it's pretty bad up to about three hundred feet.
It gets flatter, but it continues to get higher, it's higher worse.
Slope, yeah, when you're driving.
Well, your slope isn't increasing. Do you know what I mean? The, your percentage slope is increasing.
Right, 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 right.
It, it starts to level out as you get to the top. But the problem is where it starts to level out, that's where the hole is on the site. So, you can, you're on a level part of the road, but you really can't get into the site there.
Okay, Steve, if I may?
Yep.
Don, are you representing the? Okay, just a question for you. I mean, how realistic is this project if we, if it becomes a seven-hundred-foot road?
She's, she wants to develop the lot. Now, it shouldn't have to become.
Introduce yourself, because I know you and everyone else does.
I'm John Robbins from Norfolk, but I represent the client, Patty. She wants to develop the lot and she has a right to develop the lot. So, whatever you decide as a board is how it's gonna be developed. Now, there was a plan approved, not by you people as a planning board, but there was a plan approved back in nineteen ninety-two that showed a short cul-de-sac coming up there. You know, I mean, but again, would she have to go the whole seven hundred feet? Because a hundred and fifty feet is only required to have a buildable lot.
That's the frontage.
Yeah, a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, that's what I was just asking.
There's well over three hundred feet of frontage in?
You could easily design a roadway that's a hundred and fifty feet beyond the, the, the front parcel, right? You could easily develop a roadway that's only a hundred and feet, a hundred and fifty feet beyond the front parcel, right? When you say the front parcel? Can you go back to the nominal parcel? There's two parcels that they have to go between, so. This is easy to see.
Yeah, yeah, beyond the, beyond her lot, yes.
Beyond their property line.
Going a hundred and fifty feet, yes.
That would be about here.
And how much is a budding seventy-seven there, Paul, that piece of the road, how long's that?
This, it's about forty-three feet.
So, a hundred and ninety-three feet total? I think our precedent had, that we had set with putting roadways in had to do with making sure that they get what's required to have access, frontage on a roadway. So, I don't know why we're talking about a seven-hundred-foot road when we can get away with?
Right.
A one-hundred-and-ninety-foot road.
If, if that, yeah, roughly. Well, you know, you didn't make a copy of that plan, though.
I didn't.
Well, Steve, I don't think, you know, we would be having the conversation if we didn't have that slope issue.
Oh, I know there's, there's a slope issue, but can it be graded without having to deal with? I mean, can it be graded with a, a shorter road?
The change in, did you see the profile? We didn't change, we didn't grade it much.
He has a, no, he has a slope grade. Oh, okay.
It's not much of a change.
Oh, this is, this is with a short cul-de-sac? Oh, this is, this is with a short cul-de-sac?
Well...
It's with the hundred and twenty foot road.
This is, this is running it back to the, for the full length of the lot.
Oh, oh, okay.
Oh!
Well, it doesn't have to go to the full length of the lot. It only has to go a hundred and fifty feet across the frontage of the lot. Where would that fall on the slope? Yeah, where would it fall there?
Plus the forty-three feet.
Yes. Plus, well, that's not included on this, is it?
It's just a section of there.
It's about two hundred feet.
Uh, yeah, it is, yes, Lake Shore Drive. It should be one ninety-three feet.
So, that would be about here, two hundred feet.
Would you be able to do a little bit of leveling to try to decrease the slope a little bit?
I can try, but it's, it's gonna be tough right in this area.
Because it doesn't look as though that additional footage is, is helping with, with the slope.
It doesn't.
If you were to flatten the slope slightly, you know, even a degree would help. What would it do to Tony's access to his back driveway?
If I drop it, say, one percent down to eleven percent, I don't think it would affect Tony.
Well, that can always be adjusted if it happens.
Yeah.
You can make part of it, making it accessible. How, how does that sound to you, Bob?
What happens to the rest of the road?
It stays until someone else wants to build a house in there.
Oh, but wait a second, Steve, yeah, he's got a, he's got a water advantage to using the right of way in the future.
But he can use the right of way, you can use the existing cart path, can't you? I mean, it's...
Yeah, it's a forty-four roadway.
He had offered, he had, he had asked if maybe we would consider a rough grade.
Oh, rough grade all the way?
Yeah, no, road improvements, the length the planning board needs, but rough grade to anticipate a future water easement.
Oh, just rough graded and not paved beyond the hundred and fifty feet that they need.
But anticipate, anticipate it's gotta match something.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I, I like that because, you know, if it provides for emergency access egress because vehicles can't get up that twelve, you know, degree location on the other side, that you can at least address and alleviate some of those concerns in the event there was a fire or something and it was a problem.
Yeah, that could be regraded now to that point.
Now, those vehicles, I mean, fire trucks are heavy, so I don't know in terms of what would be required as far as hard pack, whatever, Bob, to...
All right, so I wanna go back to the abutters' maintenance issue here. Bob, if we got that far, and say, maybe in trading off for your water, future access, water easement, whatever you're looking for, if we got it to pavement, would you agree to...
I, I believe so, but you, you're only talking to maintain it up to a cul-de-sac?
A hundred and ninety-three feet.
And are we gonna be able to last the car in a forty-five foot radius? Is there enough room for that?
Probably be a hammerhead turn.
Yeah, probably be a hammerhead, I think. That's the area where it falls off, how close is that to the actual roadway? The fall off?
The slope.
No, the, the fall off would be mostly behind the cul-de-sac. I think the cul-de-sac would start encroaching on the flat part of the lot.
Okay.
So access wouldn't be a problem.
I think another part of the expenses that would have to bring, would probably have to bring the water up and put a hydrant at the end. So, that, you know, that'd be that much less in the future, if there's a bright side to this. It's kinda curious, um, did you, um, you have an opinion? I know Tony would like to see the road go in and maintained by the town, but what was your feeling as far as, same thing? Okay, cause it's kind of a tough project if you don't have a little harmony, you know? David's fighting one another over what to do, and the town gets in the middle, and it's never, it's always uphill that way.
Now, could you give me an example, Bob, of, of another road in town that, that has an eleven percent grade?
Yeah, good luck.
Yeah, Kingsbury Pond is, that's one road that often, I wasn't joking about backing the sander up and stuff like that. Yeah, actually, you have to back the sander up so the sand coming out will get under the back tires.
Oh, wow.
Well, it is, that's, that's, just maybe gives you an idea of what danger is. And then if we don't get it sanded inside in time, and somebody tries to go down there, they're gonna keep going onto the airport property. But, um, yeah, Priscilla, that's a real hairy road, that's gotta be improved, that's... Sometimes you just can't improve grades, it is what it is. There's a top and a bottom, and you gotta get, and everything in between.
Well, we're trying to get the best we can.
Yeah.
Without putting in walls and things like that.
And like I said, I, I would, you know, after you have it graded, I would discourage the use of it. And maybe with, again, like breakaway bollards, but yet again, if there was a fire truck, all it'd have to do is, is bump into it and roll right down the hill if it had to. That'd probably never happen, it hasn't happened, it hasn't been an need yet that I know, so...
So when you say graded, Bob?
If you don't get there, it'll be a problem. That one time.
The next year.
You're talking about, you know, putting some, or some, I mean, putting some stone down, or, I mean, just graded?
I would say just leave it as rough. Yeah, there's, there's only, say, uh, six hours for a bulldozer or something like that, and some material, so you're probably talking about, you know, eighteen hundred dollars, something like that.
So, I mean, that wouldn't be helpful as far as any emergency vehicles or anything like that.
It would be, I, I could, I could use it.
Well, I mean, I don't know, you know, with the weight of those vehicles in terms of having, you know, some service.
Well, it's better than what it is now, that's, you know...
Well, yeah, I mean, maybe that's something that, you know, the chief might give us an opinion on something like that.
I did talk to the chief.
Fire, please.
I pretty much, I mean, ask him for sure, but he's gonna say what I tell him to. In the event he has to get down there, it'd be nice to know that he can.
I think that if he were to access that, that road from that end with a breakaway bollards and come down, he's still facing the same issue that you're facing with the sand truck. Cause those vehicles are heavy, they've gotta go down that slope to get to this lot from that direction. So they might just continue right on out to the, to Lake Shore Drive.
Well, what I'm saying is, if you're talking about coming up and paving it, which is, seems like in O'Brady, the most logical thing to do is pave it from Lake Shore up. That's all I'd ever plow in the wintertime.
Yes.
The rest of it's, it's gonna be three feet of snow, and that's the way it's gonna be in O'Brady.
Paul, mic please, you're getting played.
Where is it?
Oh, yeah.
It disappeared.
So, so we're only talking about maintaining whatever, Steve, whatever you said maybe coming up. I think it's like, uh, this mark here, I measured off at like two hundred and thirty feet or something like that, first bend?
Yeah, it's two hundred feet, it's about here.
And your driveway, Tony is probably sixty feet or seventy feet, as you said?
Correct, yes.
Yeah. So the driveways wouldn't be looking at each other? One would be a little bit further up the street, I guess?
Yes.
That's why I'm scared.
Yeah.
So, I think there are a couple of things still missing from the conversation. I think one is some kind of a deed research or title investigation has been suggested to make sure that we're understanding this road properly and everybody's rights to improve it. I think the other thing that's missing from the conversation tonight is, you know, there's, there's three parties involved here, they're all in the room tonight, I think, having a discussion and seeing if everybody is agreeable to some kind of terms. I mean, your concerns are legitimate, but they seem completely achievable from, I mean, she really wants to develop her property. If they all have the rights to the property, I, it sounds like something that, you know, perhaps an agreement could be made as part of the decision. So, for me, those are the two things I'd like to see happen before we make a decision.
Are you gonna look at drainage?
I have, uh, there's no drainage up there other than, well, there is drainage, I'm sorry, but there's no connection to the drainage, it's all recharge.
Were you here when Tony said that everything just flows down onto Lake Shore Drive?
That's gonna be a concern, yeah.
Yeah, do you want them, do you want everything to, or you want it to be trapped?
No, it's gonna have to be, it's gonna have to be banked, crowned, and it has to go off into some kind of swell that will take the water eventually.
A country swell would be better for you than a, than a...
Yeah, I provided catch basins at the end with a, you know, with like a leaching catch basin on both sides of the road.
How wide a road were you proposing?
This was sixteen feet.
Sixteen times, what, two hundred and...
It's gonna be under some influence of the gravel above it, too.
How's the catch basin's gonna handle that?
But you can really play that.
The concern we had is not that the catch basin's, we had a concern about the velocity of the water that would build up on a northern twelve percent grade. We suggested, we're gonna have to have some riprap swell.
See what the width of the road was there, I think it was eighteen. That's the precedent that we set.
Other than that, you could do it.
So the catch basin's just for the, is for just the last piece?
Yeah, I, I...
Andrea, that's existing right now.
I presume the leaching catch basin's...
If you can see the green.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the only piping is, uh...
Look at you, M-five community. You got all your catch basins mapped.
Everything's totally charged.
Excellent.
Beautiful thing.
Excellent. So they're not, they're not catching anything from this road?
From where?
This road.
Well, there is definitely something coming down there. As long as you get gravel, you get some...
It all smokes right to Lake Shore.
The smoother you make it, the faster it's gonna go, and less recharge.
You do have some leveling, right?
He, he, did you see drainage yet on this?
We've not.
Okay.
Is there any way to angle the road? So, first hundred and fifty feet of the frontage goes onto the property? Can you deal with it on?
Sorry, on site?
Yeah.
I think that would be relatively easy to do, since it's considered a kind of...
So, you first...
Steve was talking about a cul-de-sac, so it'd have to go on the property, on his property.
Right, but what I'm saying is, to decrease the volume and velocity, you angle the first hundred and fifty feet cutting up top, and then the last forty-three feet is what you handle catch basins.
Yeah, you can do that, it's good.
So sixteen's a little bit, a little bit small. So that way, we're cutting it by two thirds.
I mean, this is our precedent.
Yeah, and that's, we should try to stick with that.
Can I say something? Uh, first of all, Tony, were you here back in nineteen ninety-two when it was approved?
I was in that house in nineteen ninety, but what do you mean, here?
Well, were you at the meetings? If you're here now, I would've thought you would've been then, then.
I would probably say no.
Okay, well, this is a plan that was approved back in nineteen ninety-two. Now, it has expired, I know that. But if they want, really wanna see a road in there, I mean, is that maybe something they would look at and consider? You know, the client doesn't care whether it's a road or a private way. She just wants to build on her property. Now, personally, as a taxpayer in the town, I don't wanna see another road go in. They can't afford to pave or take care of the ones they got now.
Easy.
Well, that's true.
Okay, I gotta counter to that, and we don't, but...
Go ahead.
If we don't build it to the, if we don't build it to planning board standard, it's a lot harder to maintain.
Well, private roads, not if it's private.
I know, but there's a whole discussion going on here, on maintenance.
So, I mean, there's two things that I think are factual, and tell me if I'm wrong, but what I'm hearing is that the property owner has a right to build, number one, and Gino's gonna check deeds just to confirm, but that's number one. And number two is, I don't think there's a, you know, some nifty engineering solution to the problem, given the, the grading. And because of those two things, I think we're faced with some suboptimal situation here that, you know, Steve was just, you know, talking to me about some of the standards and some of the precedents, and I think we do need to try to stick with some of the, some of the things that we normally require. I don't know that we can waive everything here. Um, there was some question about the width of the road and such, so we can have that conversation. But I think if those things are true, then I'm gonna have to accept that this is gonna be a suboptimal solution. And the question is, you know, what is that solution? And hopefully, we'll, you know, we'll get to it here pretty quickly, but I'm not sure that's gonna be tonight. But, um, but, you know, I think personally, if those two things are true, I'm gonna have to support something. And I'm, I'm pretty certain I'm not gonna like what I'm gonna support, but I'm not sure I have much choice in the matter unless somebody corrects me on this.
Well, Jeff brought up a point. We do have a precedent for building a roadway that's less than the planning board standard. And the precedent was set over on Toils End Road off of Grove Street. When a court case allowed a house to be built on a private way, and they were before the planning board, and the court directed the planning board to allow the house to be built. So they waived the width of the roadway down to twenty feet. So that's the width of the roadway that we've set a precedent as having as a minimum. So sixteen feet would, would not make it. Because if that ever has to go through, if somebody else wants to develop something up there, the roadway would have to go through, and they wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to sustain anything with a sixteen foot roadway there. What's the roadway now, what's the right of way?
Forty.
Forty?
Is the key word roadway or pavement?
Right. What's that?
Is the key word roadway to not pavement?
No, no, this is all paved, this was all paved.
That's curb to curb, right?
That's curb to curb, right. Asphalt pavement, oh, there were no curbs on this one. There's no curbs on this one. Because it was, it was always designed to be widened when, through, a road went through. And it has been widened since this was developed, right? You've been there, haven't you? Once you get into the newer lots. Oh, no, this, this is gonna be widened when the, when the next development goes through, right? The, the eighty acres behind. But this was always planned to be widened later. So that's why twenty feet was allowed.
Sixteen feet's hard to pass two cars.
Yeah, well, it's almost impossible to have two cars pass each other on sixteen feet.
But I think what we get back to is Tom's point about the intended use. You know, the intended use, just because of the particulars of this site are not to have a two lane passable road connecting all the way from Hunter to Lake Shore.
But if somebody else, there's other properties up there. If somebody else gets some approval...
Then, then we can reevaluate the intended use, is what Tom was saying.
But it seems like the, the only developable lots, based on your earlier circle requirements that you showed us, were actually accessible up of Hunter easier than going from this direction. So, I think that the, realistically, what you're gonna end up with is a short road here, a short road if expanded on the other end, or a short road extension, and then the grass or the cart, gravel driveway for safety access reasons. I think that's more realistic, cause everywhere else is already built.
Yep.
You oughta put that in the decision.
Right.
That you want, that this is...
That that's the intended use.
The projected, the projected development in the area would come...
Well, they will need a, a waiver for the length of the cul-de-sac, because I think it's less than the minimum length of cul-de-sac also.
It's two hundred.
If we're going for a hundred and ninety-three feet, it's shorter than our minimum cul-de-sac length.
Which is, which is...
I think it's two hundred and fifty feet, yeah. Am I right here?
Yeah.
Did you guys also talk about that, that section when the, when this new street comes into Lake Shore? You like to have a flattening out so that you can stop?
Yeah, leveling here.
Is there a level area here?
I don't think that's an option there, is it? I thought, I just asked him quietly, and he said, yeah, he's got some leveling at the end.
I do. I have a three percent grade at the, before it gets to Lake Shore.
How, how, how long?
Yeah.
Uh, approximately thirty feet?
Thirty feet.
Car, car length and a half, yeah.
Yeah, car and a half, but again, let's go... There's not gonna be a lot of traffic here, the intended use.
Yeah, no, that's...
That helps.
It does, it helps, it helps drainage, it helps the car.
My, my recommendation, in addition to the physical improvements, is to ask for a formal title opinion. Because this is very different from any other road that we've dealt with here in the sense there are no houses using it now. So we don't exactly know the status of the roadway and who has a right to do what.
I think that was on Michelle's list at the outset, but I think also, as Michelle recommended, how do the three affected parties feel about this?
Well, first of all, the title, who gets the title? You're talking about the title issue.
Oh, he's, he's talking to make sure that the, that what we're talking about's allowed in the titles for the roadway.
Well, according to some letters I have here, excuse me, back to when this was approved, back in nineteen ninety-two, uh, there were, subdivision was on a plan, uh, number six-six-one-six filed in land registration office of the land court, department of the trial court. Plan six-six-six is a subdivision of land owned by William... Plan six-six-six is a subdivision of land owned by William, can't pronounce his last name, but Schlußmeyer, something like that. As shown on land court certificate number three-one-oh-three-five filed with the Norfolk registry of deeds. The original subdivision was made in nineteen forty-five, prior to zoning and prior to the adoption of subdivision control law in Norfolk. Actually, I don't even think Norfolk was Norfolk Norfolk in nineteen forty-five. Yeah, okay, so.
When were you here, Jeff?
Well, I've been here for sixty years, so.
Doesn't quite get him back in nineteen forty-five.
But you go, go on to read, this, Frank Gross found out this information when he was dealing with a previous client. And as a matter of fact, there's letters in your old files on a lawyer who was looking at the parcel up top off of Hunter. And the same things came up that, you know, the, first of all, they can't, you can't abandon this right to use. This cannot be abandoned. And it's not gonna go away, just a question of how does the town want it to be done? Now, it was approved at one time. I think that they looked at all these matters back then, and I'm sure you're gonna look into them again.
You're saying, what, what was approved back then? Are you talking about that subdivision, that, the one with the small cul-de-sac on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this was approved for this lot we're talking about, this road, back in nineteen ninety-two.
Do you have the legal opinions on, on the access from that time?
On the access at that time?
Yeah, the access.
What was the width on that?
I don't.
I'm just wondering, you said something about Frank Gross. He was representing the client or was he representing the town?
No, he was representing the client at the time. But I, Paul Magione was the town attorney.
You just sounded like you had a pretty good file.
Yeah, I do. You wanna look at it?
I mean, do you wanna look at it? See if there's anything to use? Ninety-two.
I think he's basically saying that.
I moved to town.
Me too.
There's a right there for it to be developed, it's just a question, how does the town want it to be developed?
I think, I think the board gets that.
Yeah.
Can I see this, Sean? So guys, talking about hundred ninety-three feet, give or take, up to here.
Yep.
In order to develop these lots, this lot, which is remote because of the topography issue going down, and also potentially this lot, but there's a house here today.
There is a house.
There is this house, so it's already developed. This circle wouldn't fit here, so they can't access that. So realistically, a full-blown roadway through, you, you're not gaining anything. Okay? If they wanna develop this somehow, some way, pulling, you know, extending Hunter. Right. And the cart, the cart path gravel roadway through here. So I suggest that, we've spent a lot of time on this and really, the only, barring some unforeseen legal title issues, it comes down to trying to work out an agreement here that's gonna be amicable since you kinda all have a stake in the road. And that's where we have to try to get to a decision, because we do have a full agenda tonight.
Now, Bob, have you heard anything about the town accepting this roadway? I've never heard that the town accepted this roadway.
I think we can all agree the town never accepted it.
No, it's not.
Yeah, I keep hearing people saying the town accepted the road.
Well, he's saying it was, it was approved as a subdivision to be built.
Well, nineteen forty-three, yeah.
But, you know.
Forty-five.
Ninety-two.
That one, the plan that he's got.
The ninety-two, but it was never built, so it never got done. So.
Which looks like it's comparable to what we're talking about right now. Except we're not even requiring the, the, the circle. We're just gonna have a, a hammerhead in there.
However you want it.
The mechanics of the road, the drainage of the road, all that will work out on the engineering end. We gotta have a buy-off on the concept here between the three parties, am I right?
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I think the, the point is that.
We should check your deed.
That something will get approved by the board, correct? I mean, we're going to give something, it's just a matter of what. So it might be in the best interest of the parties to have a conversation. And see if you can come up with something that's, as Peter says, as amicable as possible, because I think the board, it, we're encumbered to render, I think, a decision which would allow the development of the property as far, unless Gino determines otherwise here.
Try to keep your waivers to a minimum. That, that's why I said, we've got a precedent for a twenty-foot road in extreme circumstances like this. So if it's a twenty-foot road, it's four feet wider than what you're proposing.
Right.
So, to continue, we're gonna meet our next meeting.
Would that need curving too, or curving?
I think.
This is one that we would consider.
Country drainage.
Yeah.
I agree.
We may wanna see if we can try to get some country drainage in there, if it's possible.
Better there than on Lake Shore Drive.
Yeah.
And as much on the existing property as possible.
There's a sway of this concept we could play.
Yes.
Right. And again, try to go up, angle the, angle the first hundred fifty feet from the top onto the wall. Decreasing the need for surcharging the manuals.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, so. Excellent.
Where are we on clocks ticking for this? Is this formally filed?
Oh, it's a hearing, isn't it?
Yeah. It's formally filed, so when was it filed?
Needs an extension, I'm sure.
When we start this, Betsy?
Well, that's the first time we, we started. I don't know when it was, uh, accepted. Might be a month. We have to have, within a hundred and twenty days?
Hundred and thirty-five.
On November twenty, November twenty-first, it was submitted.
Yeah. Clock is ticking.
Okay, we're gonna have to get an extension on this.
Yeah, we still, we're still within the hundred and thirty-five though.
We're close.
Or barely.
Good call.
Yeah.
So is it possible for you to get an extension from them, Betsy?
Is it?
John, from your applicant?
Yes.
Can you get Betsy an extension?
Yes.
So we can move.
Still waiting.
Um, I don't think that we need an awful lot of time for this, another sixty days? That should be more than enough, don't you think?
Yeah, that's.
How many days?
You trying to wrap things up?
To the end of the year, we should cover it then.
No, I'm talking about on the one thirty-five.
I didn't add it up exactly, I didn't count them exactly.
We're close, we're probably at like one-twenty now.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I think we can do it fairly quickly. So do you wanna, uh, come back at our next hearing? Do you think you'll be able to have everything done by the next hearing?
We don't have a date to tell them.
Well, we'll set one. It'll be at least three weeks, right?
Yeah, next one is, is probably April eighth, that's what Betsy's suggesting.
That's three weeks, right?
Three weeks is April eighth.
April eighth?
Yeah.
Oh, one, two, three.
But you have to get it to Tom, head, head of town.
A new, a new grading, the widened road, the drainage. The, the more you have, the quicker it'll all be done.
Yeah. Yeah. Get back the tenth by chance, or Thursday that week.
All right, so we'll continue this?
Well, agree on the eighth?
Yeah, I think the, the eighth good for everybody?
No, he's saying no.
Oh, he's saying no? What's good for you?
Well, just that, that week is.
The week after, it's gonna be a month?
Could we go the Thursday before, the third?
Yeah. It, how about the Thursday? I always like those Thursdays.
April third.
Oh, that's the Thursday, oh, okay. You arrive an hour after we start. What's that?
I need a little more time.
What about the tenth, that one?
Well, he's still on the road. Jeff is still on the road.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to go to the following week. Come on.
Fifteenth?
It's five weeks out. And it's four weeks. Texted.
But, can we do what?
You, you concerned about pushing it off that far? Betsy, you wanna?
What about the previous week? What about the previous week, yeah? Which it.
Yeah, but that, that gives them two weeks. Can you do it in two weeks?
Doesn't give Betsy enough time. I don't have enough time, I've got public hearings to schedule, so.
Much time, you need three weeks?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the eighth was the earliest you could do it?
For Betsy, yeah.
For Betsy, for, well, for our public hearings, yeah.
So it looks like the fifteenth. Is that right?
Tax day.
Well, this would be a perfect place to be. Your taxes are due. You're not gonna be in South Boston, bring it up to the, uh.
Maybe I will be.
No one does that anymore, okay?
Oh, yeah?
Going to cell station? The old days?
Okay. So, does someone wanna make a motion to, to continue this to the fifteenth? So moved.
Is it first on our agenda?
First on the agenda, seven thirty.
Yep.
Second?
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So we've got the next date of our next, uh, meeting.
Mr. Chairman, you should probably vote to grant the extension that the applicant is requesting to a date certain.
Do we have that?
We don't have that yet.
Yeah. Do we have a, an extension request?
We, oh, yeah, because we won't be, I can tell you.
We do have one very quickly.
Okay. Well, we, we'd like that, so that we can vote on it. So.
Well, he's, uh, so the date certain would be sixty days from today?
Sixty days in addition to, from, from the day that it expires. And it's gonna be expiring fairly soon, right?
It might be two weeks, week or two. Do you need twenty-first?
We won't need those sixty days.
Is it calendar days?
You don't have those sixty days, 'cause you lose the votes. You might wanna schedule two meetings in April.
Hundred and seventeen.
They might need two, two meetings in April.
Hey, Gino, this isn't considered a site plan, is it?
No. No, it's a subdivision. No, it's three votes.
Three votes. Oh, oh, okay, we can always, we can always get the votes.
So who's gonna be here after May, uh?
We don't know.
Right. We know, we know, we know who's not gonna be here.
I'll be here.
Yeah, so two votes will be here.
Yeah, two votes.
What should I do?
I think these would be extended to May thirty-first.
Say, I hear, but.
But we're, we're about a hundred and eighteen days, a hundred and seventeen days.
For how long?
Is that your claim?
Wow. You got a cape in your closet or something? Extension. Wow, that's really.
True, the subdivision.
That's really nice of you.
To the MacArthur Ave?
Yeah.
No, you won't. That's why, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Deadline. Decision deadline.
So if you're on the front of the line, you'll probably be thinking the same thing.
A little bit extra, a little bit over sixty. Well, that, actually, that's just about, add sixty to the, what's left.
We're just waiting for the continuance to happen. Kind of opens something else until we're.
John, can you sign this?
We're done with this.
Probably not what he wanted to say, man.
True. Here's the extension, Steve. Oh, excellent. Okay.
Who wants to?
Seventeen days.
Oh, you had a hundred and seventeen now.
Hey, Walter, quickly, before you go.
We're just gonna take a quick vote on the extension.
Quick vote. Okay, I make a motion to, uh, extend the subdivision decision, decision deadline to May thirty-first, two thousand fourteen, per the owner's representative or applicant's representative.
Second?
All those in favor? Aye. All right, excellent. We're done.
Be right back.
Pass that along? Now we can watch.
We'll pass seven fifty-five.
Continue to Dunkin' Donuts.
Good ten minutes, ten minutes.
Seven fifty-five.
Too late for me.
Yeah, nine oh-five.
These things happen.
Sleeve was covering this little man.
Problem.
Weren't you here?
Tom have comments on Dunkin' Donuts?
You're gonna recuse the leave? Oh, you're on this one too?
Yeah, I'm on this one.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought you were gonna sit in on this.
Do you wanna continue one oh-six, one oh-eight to a date certain, so some people can leave?
Oh, now that we have the date set.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have to have, uh, a super major, oh, you, you have to recuse yourself, that's right. So now, we don't have enough votes.
We don't have anybody, it's just you and me.
And we can't do it alone.
They'll be back in minutes.
Yeah.
Well, safe to say, you know, it's gonna be April fifteenth.
What's the motion gonna be?
Motion's gonna be, yeah, it's the only, next thing on the agenda, so. We might even do seven forty-five in case there's any chance this one's continued.
So do we, do, uh?
Are we pretty sure?
Yeah, we are, we are gonna do a continuance on, um, one oh-six.
So make it for eight o'clock on fifteen?
Oh, there's no request, oh, one oh-eight, oh, okay, that's at eight fifteen. Oh, we can do both of them, because we're, we'll be on the time for both of them.
Right.
So if you wanna remove yourself.
Do we need just, are we okay, three of us?
Yeah, I, I think we're okay for, for.
So open it first, so we can.
Oh, okay. Okay, we're going to open the, uh, public hearing for one oh-six and one oh-eight Main Street. One oh-six is scheduled for eight o'clock. One oh-eight is scheduled for eight fifteen. We're beyond the time to open both of those hearings, and there is a request for a continuance.
So I'm gonna move that we continue the public hearing for one oh-six Main Street and one oh-eight Main Street to April fifteenth, eight o'clock and eight oh-five.
Yeah, yeah, we can do it that way, right. Okay, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
April fifteenth.
April fifteenth. Well.
It's about the hundred and thirty-five date, like, 'cause this, this one's been ongoing a long time too.
It doesn't apply, that's not a subdivision, it doesn't apply to that.
Doesn't apply to this? Is there a time limit on this one?
There.
As long as it continues.
Yes, it's interesting, yeah. There, there's a time limit to start and a time limit to file a decision once it's closed, but while it's open, there's no time limit.
Okay, we can, um, everyone here? Okay. Okay, we're gonna continue the, the public hearing for Dunkin' Donuts, one thirty-four Main Street, for a site plan modification for a drive-through modification. Okay. You're on. Make sure you have a microphone.
Paul's on.
Oh, oh, Paul's on, yeah, okay.
This is the, the site plan again, it's, we haven't really changed anything from the existing site plan that we had. However, we have, I'm just showing this in red. This is the drive-through that we're presently proposing. And we've, we've showed this as a landscaped area. I did draw up a, I did draw up a landscape plan showing, uh, various plantings along the landscaping. I know that was on the last sheet. And this is basically what I came up with, being a great landscaper myself. Proposed some azalea plants and wintergreen arbivideae in this, um, in this curved area in here, beside, beside the, uh, drive-through and the existing parking. beside, beside the, uh, drive-through and the existing parking. I also showed some arborvitae over by the, the rubbish disposal.
Now, the, the wintergreen arborvitae, is that a tall arborvitae or is that a short one?
That's, that would be a short one.
You wanna see the tops of the cars?
Yeah, you wanna be able to see something through there, you know, you don't wanna block it.
Yeah.
And, uh, but the, the part that's between the parking lot and the drive-through on the right-hand side, yeah, over there, are there trees planted on, on, in that landscaping, uh, strip now?
There are, there are, there's some six-inch maples. There's one, two, three, I believe, right there now.
Are you leaving those or are those coming out?
Um, I think we can leave those.
Oh. Well, you need a microphone. Is there another microphone?
Just pull one of them up.
Here at the table.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
It can't go far, though. You have to move forward.
Oh, it isn't? Oh, wrong mic. Wow.
A little light. Uh, we, we may remove one, but, I mean, we can keep all of them, as long as it's not interfering with the flow of the traffic.
Well, I was only asking because I, I thought that it would be nice to have something that has a little height but doesn't block.
We can keep them, as long as they don't interfere with, like, the flow, we, we can keep all of them.
They might have been a requirement of the original site plan.
I'm sure they were, that's, that's why I was asking.
I also, uh, regraded this portion of the site so that this would be flowing out towards Main Street. And in so doing, I, I redid the drainage for the whole site as far as where everything was going. And in the rear, it's going to this existing catch basin, which goes to some leaching galleys, which goes to a drain manhole over to another overflow section of leaching galleys. And the flow going to the rear, now to that catch basin, is less in this site plan than, than the existing. Uh, I also am proposing a, a catch basin located at the start of the drive-through. And this, this picks up this area, 'cause I, I regraded this area here to get to this point. And so the flow towards Main Street now is less than what's going there today. So, you know, this, this should work. I've got a catch basin I'm proposing here, going to, uh, a drain manhole located at the center of the accessway. As far as I know, this is still there. I think it's paved over, but it's, I think it's still there.
Yes, it is. Yeah, I was just looking for it.
Okay.
I, I also added a note about a third light fixture would be added to each of these existing light poles here to shine down onto the drive-through area.
I'm sorry, is that a question about the, uh, dumpster that you just, you just made? I remember that got some conversation at the last.
The dumpster, I've tilted somewhat so that it goes out towards Carlson Circle. That's located here. I also plan, I put some of those arborvitae's up against that to kinda disguise it a little bit. I also eliminated one parking space, the one that I had down by the proposed dumpster. I've taken that out. So now we have, um, twenty-five spaces rather than twenty-six. And the parking spaces fifteen through twenty-five should be designated as employee parking only. That's back here.
To get at the dumpster, the truck would come in how?
It could come in from Carlson Circle.
It would back up to it, right?
Right.
Pull in and then back up, that's the reason it's angled.
Yep.
I think we kind of touched on that last time.
I just wanted to hear him say that, I think that's what.
Oh, okay.
That's about all the changes I made. Were there any other comments that people had? I, I don't.
The only other one was the little short car space that we were worried about up on that.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, up here.
And you felt that the, the employee parking issue wouldn't really become a.
He'll be parking his Cadillac in there.
That was really an active parking.
I will not be parking a Cadillac.
Right.
I, I think that fell under the category of what I felt was something that, it's not ideal, but because it's an existing site,
Yeah.
and overall this is an improvement, that it's something that I, I could support, even though I am a little bit concerned about that, but I think overall this is better than what we have.
Well, the fact that it's employee parking, that makes a huge difference.
Yeah, as opposed to customer.
Steeze car could fit there. You could, I could even back out of there.
So that'll be part of their onboarding, where you tell them they better be careful backing up so they don't back up into your customers in the drive-through.
Chairperson, looking out for my future.
And there was, there was something about the turn to get in. It, it did, it looks like you've widened the entrance a little bit, have you? That, the entrance to the drive-through, is that a little wider?
Yes, this, this is twenty feet wide entering the drive-through.
Are you talking about the Main Street entrance or the entrance?
The entrance to the drive-through, that, yeah.
It's at twenty feet.
The red part.
Yeah, that's twenty feet wide. I think I had eighteen before.
Yeah, 'cause we had a concern about the turn trying to get in.
Right. And we decided to leave also the throat from Main Street the same width.
Yeah. I think I had eighteen before. Does, does anyone, Walter, do you have any questions?
Well, it looks like they've addressed the issues that we raised last time.
Jeff, you?
I think the issues are entirely addressed. I guess, um, it might be a good idea just to go through, um, this, if you recall, there was an email with the number of, uh, concerns, uh, points of, uh, contention, if you will, disagreement.
Yeah.
Um, just to make sure that they've gone away.
Where is that one located?
Uh, you may not have, this is, uh, for the package of the prior meeting.
Oh, this is, oh. Oh, okay.
So. So there was a question about.
A special permit for the drive, for a drive-up window.
The drive-up window, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So there, now, was this in response to something that you had written, Gino, that this came up in terms of a comment that?
If we modify it, do we have to go through the special permit for the drive-through window again?
I would think so. It, it already, it already exists.
Well, there, there's a comment here about, uh, special permit for a drive-through win, drive-up window.
Must be for the other location.
What's that?
No.
Must be for the other location. I don't think for this one.
No, no, this is, this is.
For existing, it's been there for.
Yeah, well, we know, we know.
These are comments, if I'm, I'm gonna say it from Mr. Primpus to Betsy, that I just wanna make sure that they've all been addressed. So I, I think we're all on the same page here at this point. I just wanna make sure that our businesses.
Right, but it isn't something new. It's been there for twelve or twenty-five years.
I'm not suggesting that there's an issue, sir. I'm just saying that this was presented from Mr. Primpus to us, and I wanna make sure that these have all been dealt with.
You don't want somebody saying a couple of weeks from now, they should have applied for a new special permit. You wanna make sure that it's cleared up tonight.
Um, so questions about the catch basin, um, and oil basin, so that's addressed, correct?
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
And I think we've eliminated this, um, as far as, uh, traffic, uh, must have been some interest in perhaps, uh, traffic study. Maybe that was, that was done, I don't, I don't recall what was done, but I think.
No matter what happens.
The queuing, yeah, okay.
Oh, okay.
I did revise that. I, uh, lengthened out the distance between the, the oncoming cars to Tom's request last month.
Yep, yep. I, I think we're aligned on all these things. I'm just trying to make sure because this was a fairly lengthy list that we had been given. Uh, so we dealt with the drive-through entrance.
Mm-hmm.
Eleven feet. And where are we now in terms of the?
We're at twenty feet now.
Okay.
It's still eleven feet once you're in the queue, once you're in your queuing lane.
Once we're in there.
Right, but what we needed, it was for the turn swing.
Right.
Right.
And this was a question about parking bays, and we talked about that for employees only, so we've addressed that. The dumpster's been addressed. Landscaping the island has been addressed. And lighting, um. And your comment was that, uh, changing out the fixtures of our two parking lot pole lights and adding a three header as opposed to the two header that we currently have, and it should provide sufficient lighting for the guests using the drive-through lane. So we're all in agreement that lighting is acceptable, okay?
And that doesn't spill over, although it spills over onto the MBTA parcels, so I don't think it would have.
No, it just steps down to the, the category.
Yeah. Counter, yeah.
Um, I'm good.
Okay. Peter, you got any comments?
Nope. Where is Bill?
No, other than just maybe wanting to walk through PSC's, um, documents.
Did PSC have, uh, some comments?
We, we always have comments, just to, just to keep.
New comments, Tom, new comments.
Yes, new comments, yeah. Um, and it, and it's more just, uh, probably some refinements that should be on the plan before the thing goes to construction. The, uh, plan that was submitted does show by directional arrows the, uh, runoff from the easterly part of the parking lot heading to the new catch basin that Paul was proposing to put in. But that area really isn't defined by spot grades, so the intent is, uh, that it's gonna be draining frontward. But you can't really tell in terms of spot grades exactly how to place the pavement. So rather than leave it up to the contractor in the field, probably put some spot grades, uh, on there. The most.
I had them on there. I don't know what happened to this.
It, it's that universal CAD person that turns the blunt off at a, at a moment's notice, so. Um, the, uh, we, we had several comments, but I think the most serious one I wanted to mention. We are concerned, um, about the way the new catch basin is connected to the drainage system. We, al- although there aren't inverts on the drain lines that are shown on the plan, we understand that the drain lines flow easterly. And the way that catch basin is connected in, it's going virtually counter to the flow of the drainage. You know, the, it's, it's good engineering practice, you drop it in at ninety degrees. This is like at about three degrees, so the water's gonna be coming from the catch basin and then conflicting with the water that's flowing in the other direction. It's gonna be all kinds of turbulence there, which can really cut down the capacity. So the real way to do it is to put in two structures, to put in the catch basin and then put a new drain manhole somewhere on the drain line such that the, uh, the connection is about ninety degrees. I can't tell you exactly how to do that, 'cause there's no inverts on those drains. In fact, they don't show going beyond the site. I believe they go eastward.
They do, it goes off.
So it's, it's running counter to the flow. It's just not standard practice to do it that way.
I can put another drain manhole up here to.
No, you, you won't put it.
That would be ninety degrees.
Yeah, you, you probably would want, I assume this is a through drain line?
Yes.
You, you'd wanna put it on here somewhere so that the, the catch basin would drop in at ninety degrees and flow, flow that way.
Yeah, okay. This, this drain line that comes around here, it's an overflow drain. In other words, if, if these leaching galleys don't pick up the flow, it has an overflow capacity there.
I think that's a drain line that runs along Main Street.
This one here?
No, the, the one that you're, that goes by it.
Oh, this one, yes.
Yeah, so I think that's what you should connect it to. But that was, we had other minor comments, but that, that was the big one. That's, that, the way that's connected in, I think is a problem.
So. Are there any questions from the public? Anybody? No? Anyone feel like closing this, uh, hearing?
Make a motion to close a public hearing for Dunkin' Donuts located at one thirty-four Main Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes.
Bob McGee. You're up. We're only an hour and twenty-four minutes behind.
You finished, you finished your.
Still, still making sick Patrick's fever.
You are.
What's that?
He's wondering what his next steps are. Wants some advice.
Oh, he, it, he, he, he just has to submit the new plans. We'll have our engineer go over them. And, um, Gino, you usually review them also too, right?
Yeah, and I draft the, the decision.
Yeah, so then he'll draft the decision for us. We'll go through the decision and we'll edit it as to the way that we want it.
Should we just be one catch basin?
Well, it's a cash ba, catch basin and a, and a, and, and there is a, a manhole that has to be put in so that it goes in at a ninety-degree angle.
Even though we already had one, the town took it away?
And who, the ti-
We had one in the FDM.
That's the original, it's still there.
Town, the town area, but we had one.
Well, yeah, but it, he, he's saying that even, the one that's there won't be able to accept it because it's at too sharp an angle. It would go into the catch basin right where the, the drain going down the street is coming out.
Where's the, where's the one that was taken away?
Twenty-five years ago, and, uh.
In the street?
Right.
No, under, under.
Under the paving with the sidewalks.
It's underneath the concrete.
Bob, Dunkin' Donuts entrance.
Yep.
Uh, paved over or cemented over?
This was.
Drain hole, um.
Catch basin.
Catch basin.
No, not a catch basin, a, a manhole.
They did?
I think it was, uh, what was the previous, uh, DW, uh, Butch?
Butch, yeah.
Right.
He put the, he put the sidewalk over it?
Yes.
Yes. So now we're stuck, and now we have to pay for something that, uh, we already paid a long time ago? Doesn't make sense yet.
So you put it in before?
Yes, was there for twenty-five years.
Was it a manhole or a catch basin?
It was a, it was a manhole.
It's a drain manhole, yeah.
It can be totally functional if it's just paved over, but it's not good practice, but.
Right.
It is still there.
Right.
The catch basin, I understand, yeah, but I get it, we gotta.
That's what was there?
Well, the problem with the catch basin that they're recommending is it goes in at too sharpened angle from where the, 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 uh, the outflow comes from the manhole. So it's coming down east, east on Main Street, and their catch basin would tie into the manhole at a sharp angle. It's like, what'd you say? It was a three-degree difference?
The.
It's, it's rea- really close.
Main direction of flow is eastbound, the catch basin connects in and drops in going westbound. So it's gonna be dropping in counter to the direction of flow in the main through line. It's gonna create all kinds of turbulence, it's gonna limit the velocity there. It's just not good engineering practice to do that.
Betsy? How much have been, what are we taking for flow there? Is it the entire parking lot, the end, the?
No.
Drive-through?
Just the parking, front parking lot.
Yeah, it's about half of the drive-through and that portion of the parking lot goes up to the landscaped area.
It's only about twenty-five percent from there.
There's, there's drainage that goes into a landscaped area?
No, 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 no.
Isn't that what you just said?
Up to the, up to the landscaped area, from there down to the Main Street.
Oh.
That's the area that would be tributary to that catch basin.
Well, wouldn't that entire parking lot drain to that catch basin? Where else is it gonna go?
Well, part of it's gonna drain toward Main Street.
The other side of the island's gonna.
We have some of the other side, we have a little spike.
Yeah. Anyway, you can look at what Tom was, was talking about. If you have to call Tom, you can, you can talk to Tom.
Oh, good.
That's okay with you, isn't it, Tom?
It is, it is all in the supply chain.
Okay.
But you can't start anything until our decision is actually approved.
Yeah, one second. We try to minimize our project here. If it's going to be too expensive and everything, we're not gonna do anything. Just tell you right now upfront. I mean, we're not gonna start pouring up, you know, building up room here or anything. We sacrificed, we lost, you know, the sidewalk, we lost the, uh, the, the, the main hall there. We done everything what the town did, and now we have to repay back again. So we try to be a little bit flexible both ways.
Well, we're trying to be flexible too.
We made a project for you guys to make it easy.
Yeah, we're trying to be flexible too.
So you're gonna turn our point here.
Let's see what these two guys can work out, and then we'll reflect it in the decision if necessary.
Yeah, let's see what comes out, right.
We have to do it.
Fair enough.
We've already closed this, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So Bob McGee, you have some updates for us, huh?
Oh.
Microphone.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, there it is.
Thanks.
Well, I haven't been here in a while to talk about subdivisions. We're just coming out of the winter and, but now we're getting into a construction season. And, um, every once in a while, I'd like to come before you and not just give you a, a, an inspection report, but just to let you know what's going on. And where I'm having some problems and where everything's at a, at a construction stage. In particular, what I wanted to talk to you about, I don't know if you've, I think you've got my recommendation with regards to Fox Run. Just to give you a little history on Fox Run, um, I think what I'm gonna tell you is something that you already know. That is, um, a subdivision that started in two thousand twelve. It had, uh, a developer, uh, in a excavate, um, in a contractor developing that site that is no longer there. So it switched from one contract, I don't think it's fair to mention names, but it's, and you know what I'm talking about, switched from one site contractor to another. And then, and during the year, um, the construction season in two thousand thirteen. In two thousand twelve, the, the contractor came in and, and put in four hundred and fifty feet of, uh, pavement and all utilities, but collected, connected all the utilities over. I'm not, not four hundred and fifty here, I'm sorry, uh, up to station fourteen plus five. So it works out to some twelve hundred feet or whatever it is, I, I really can't remember. But the utilities got connected all the way to, um, to the Rentham Line on Warren Street. That was in two thousand twelve. In two thousand thirteen, the developer pretty much went on to the lots and started, after lot releases, went on and started developing lots. Since the beginning of this, uh, subdivision, um, you know, some, uh, hundred and fifty feet into the lot, they ran it to ledge. They went from nice gravel off of Maple Street, struck ledge, and it was, it was a nightmare for them and everybody because they had this fourteen-foot cuts in some areas. Blasted down to subbase for road building. And then at that point, they couldn't dig any deeper to put the utilities in, so they had to come back and blast that, and they had a massive amount of ledge on site. Given the rules for building and so forth, it probably, if they could've blasted the whole thing and did what they wanted to, they probably could've made a profit on this. Because it, it's gold in some areas where you can process gravels and sell it and so forth, but some sympathy to that. So what we've been dealing with is the material that goes back on the road above our utilities. And the materials they use for subbase materials, I've had Tom out on the, uh, on site once, just because I needed some home cooking with me, if you will. Because I had, uh, you know, the, the developer, the owner out there, and I'm telling him, you got too much ledge here. I can't use it in any concentrations. Rock on top of rock does not make a good base. It needs to be mixed with gravel. It has to be a good concentration spread out over of gravel. And because they had so much ledge, and some of it was very unsuitable ledge, it was one that breaks, that's a shale material that breaks down, and it doesn't stop at a sand granule, it breaks down to a powder. And it's basically hardened clay, so it's, I call it evil. It's just not something we want under pavement or above our utilities. But they had a lot of it, and I've made an agreement with them, with Tom standing next to me, that if you can, you can use some of this stuff. Because they had to build four feet before they'd even get to that store bought, twelve inches of process, four inches of three-quarter inch process, and then they put a binder and top one. So, we agreed that if they had, they cut this with some good gravel, we could build subgrades, subgrade, better known as a gravel burrow or ordinary burrow. So that went from, my recommendation is four pots good gravel, one pot ledge, crushed small enough and mixed in, no big deal. Then it got down to fifty-fifty, and I started wanting the, the excavator operator, you know, this isn't. You've gone from what we agreed on where we have a specification for this to something that, that we're allowing you to get away with. Then I would show up on site and find direct deposits of ledge, not mixed or anything, and I'd warn them about it. To the point where I'd stop the project again and would have another meeting. So then, that one, that happened a couple of different times, right to the point where, um, where we can where they stopped, and then they went on to the private lots and they started blasting and developing private lots. Two thousand thirteen was pretty quiet up at Fox Run. But towards the end, they wanted to pave up to, uh, to the Fox, um, to, to the Rentham Line from that station that I mentioned that they did in fourteen plus fifty. Tom, you don't remember the length of that day, it's like.
Probably enough.
It was lengthy enough. It was something like that. And so now they're going all the way to Rentham, and prior to doing that, they were processing some nice materials. Again, just offsite, but they weren't cutting it with enough gravel and fines. So that when, you can imagine, if the grade is going up and putting that final grade on just before compaction in the, in the binder course of asphalt. The grade is going up there and it windrows, and all the fines would drop and the rocks would go. It'd almost look like a washed stone, and I had a problem with that. And so we went back and forth in that, and I called Tom again to stand by me, and, uh, we made a decision. But we would make note of this, but we let them pave on it. It, trust me, it, it's good material, it's good hardened material. But it isn't what we specify, and I've letting them go, and I let them go, and I let them go, and so forth, and so finally that's paved. Now, turn the clocks to more modern times, and we have another contractor up there, and they started work in February. Now, what they did was they started on the far, on the Rentham Line on Farrington, and now they're working backwards to Warren. And it went, so they hooked up to a manhole and they went a certain amount of distance into good gravel, then it was ledge again. And then we had the problem, just like the previous contractor, where they didn't know anything about what I was going through except for the owner did. Don't use that ledge. I don't want any concentration. The ledge itself was better material, a better rock. It was a broken rock. It wasn't a crushed down, it was a broken rock, but it was a hardened rock. Actually gold if you would just put some, uh, fines in it, you know, a, a three-inch rock, a, a three-quarter inch rock, some sand, a good mixture of gravel. But they started dumping this six-inch to four-inch minus pure on the road again, and here we go with another argument, stop the job again.
Uh, you, do they have to dig it back out to, to, uh, start putting the good material back in? Is that, is that the way it works?
Well, you know, they go down to a, to a grade where you can find something consistent, where you can then build your subgrade. And again, you build your subgrade, say if this is the finished asphalt up here or something like that, they build it up to here, and then we get to the last twenty inches. You have twelve inches of a processed gravel where we ask for a testing lab to tell me what this thing is made of, what it compacts at. And then we have a specification for it, and we mirror the Mass Highway anyways. And then we have four inches of smaller rock. So as you go up, you can imagine, you get a, a finer and finer, until you have a binder and then you have a final top. And you got your sheeting, and you got your maximum compaction and so forth. So, um, so that's, I hope that answers your question. But as you build all that up, the, it, it's hard to imagine this, but you have a utility underneath there, and everything directly above that utility is a trench. Even though it's been leveled straight across the street, it becomes a trench. So what's good for subbase may not be good for what's in the trench. Understanding that it's difficult, um, you gotta let some things go. I need to make some field decisions, and I understand the process and have been in it a long time, so. But here we go in February again, and they're coming up a new contractor, and they're running it to the ledge, and they're not mixing it with enough gravel. We go to one pile and we, and, and, you know, and I show up and I find that there's a a Euclid there with beautiful material in it, and, um, it gets used for just over the pipe. And then we take the, the rock and we backfill the subgrade and stop the project again. And I think I've said enough. I've had it. Um, I don't have enough time to perform my own task as a director, that I need to go out there and catch them doing this time after time. So I told them, I wanna put a full-time inspector up here. I put my feelings in writing. They, I think, at least verbally agreed on it, 'cause our last meeting was last Friday. I brought them into my office and I showed, I demonstrated everything with photographs and. So I think what they're going to do is, um, they're going to look for a, maybe a formal request from this board, so if I could get your support, we can give them a letter. I'll write the letter even, and copy you on it if you want, and they're going to deposit, I estimated some twenty-four thousand something, so. I wrote twenty-five in my recommendation there just to round it off. And what I'd like to do is have an inspector that will report to me, and I'll put the reports together as I've been submitting reports to you with subdivisions, get to certain stages, just like I will on this one. And he'll go up there and he'll spend, say, four hours a day maximum, over an eight-hour period. And I have somebody that will work with me on that and has the knowledge and, and so. I calculated that over like four months, four hours a day, five days a week, four months at, uh, some sixty-five dollars an hour. So there's a method to, there's a methodology to the price that I'm proposing. And they're going to put that into the planning board's observation account, so that this person and his company, it's just a one-man deal. Can bill, invoice the planning board, uh, uh, account, and he has insurance, and he'll report to me, and that's the biggest news, and I, I just, uh, was hoping to get your support on that.
Well, yeah, do you have any?
Have you worked this out with Mark Mastriani? Is this?
Mark wasn't present, but John was, uh, another, um, project manager or something like that, somebody in the deciding position.
Okay.
And he's, you know, verbally agreed, okay, we'll go work on getting the funds. So there was a handful of people from Pulte, uh, group there, the actual site contractor, and, um. It's just the way it's gotta be, or, you know.
Princess is the sub there, right?
It is now, yeah.
Okay, and I'm assuming they have a contractual relationship with Pulte if they're doing it?
I don't know how it's, how it is. Maybe they get some money for gravel. I don't know. They're breaking ledge, so there's, who knows how it's structured. I just don't know, and I never asked. But they're my contact during the day. When they're not doing what I'm looking for and what I'm recording, then I call Pulte and.
Yeah.
And they, and they, they start to listen really good then. Pulte's been actually very, they're, they're probably sick of hearing from me. Because I've, I've stopped the action up there now four, four times. And, um, even this year, I, I, I made them go back from some of the work that they did last year just to dig up some trenches, and, you know, I'm not usually like this, but I'm not, you know, I, I'm very suspect.
The reason why I'm asking is obviously if they have a contract with an excavator to do this work, then the, the excavator's working off a set of required plans passed by us, inspected by you, and it's no downside to Pulte, which is probably the reason why you have an amicable, uh, agreement. Result, either Princess does their job, which I'm not saying they're not, it's just not to your standards, which is the requirement. And they're probably just gonna backcharge them if they don't do it, so.
Pass some money every time he shuts them down, and they have to dig back up and redo something. So if they might encourage the proactive involvement so that they're not having to do things two, three times.
And. Okay, does, does anyone have any objection for us, uh, to send a letter to, um, the, Pulte Homes to, um, to follow, uh, Bob's advice, wholeheartedly support Bob's recommendations?
Absolutely.
The only question I have, um, has been spoken about this. So is this basically an engineer, somebody that can inspect as well? It mentions testing services.
Now, there's, um, there's a couple of people that I can choose from, but basically it's just somebody with experience and eyes and ears. I'm not an engineer and I'm doing the inspections.
Road guy.
So is that the prevailing wage? I mean, I mean, you know better than I do, I mean.
Well, it's a sole proprietor, so it's, uh, it's not an issue. Engineering is not an issue.
Okay.
So he's gonna commit like fifty dollars an hour, something like that?
So, I guess, said another way, totally support what you're proposing. I just wanna make sure that, you know, what we're asking for in terms of the hourly rate and those details hang together and that I can defend that as well, 'cause I'm not, I don't have that experience that you do, but that would be my only comment.
Yeah, could, could you find out what the exact hourly rate is gonna be? Because we're gonna have Gino draft a letter for us.
Okay.
With all the names of the appropriate people, and we'd like to be able to say what the hourly rate's gonna be and how many hours it's gonna be there. And would anyone mind if I reviewed the letter from Gino and had it sent out? Because we don't know, we don't wanna wait until the next meeting.
My only other comment is, do we wanna be tied to the four months, or do we want it to be tied to the duration of?
Oh, it's, it, well.
The road work. Does it look as though the? Hourly rate for X number of hours per week through a certain substantial completion, if you will, or?
How much road work?
The, um, the right to do this is in, not only in the subdivision rules and regs, but you can, you can change the fees at any time to reflect the need. I think if that, if that answers your question.
If I understand, you, you just calculated an upfront cost by using the four months, but you weren't, you weren't necessarily limiting it to four months, right?
No, not at all. That's, you know, if it goes, I'm, I'm pretty convinced that they'll be, I'll be gone from there for lengths of time now. Because what they'll start to is doing the development of the lots, until they come back and they start setting curb and. But they don't do that until most of the subdivision's developed and then they put the final coat on. You know, the tree planting and so, I'll, I'll be around for all that, but it's not the need to have me there like it is now. Now's critical. Now they've got only one utility in, now they gotta go back down and put, don't forget the saw on this. Saw's, uh, pretty fragile going through ledge, so that's gotta be properly installed, bedded, backfilled. Then on the other side, you got water, then you got your laterals, then you have electricity going up through the sidewalks. After that's done, I think, um, I think probably close to that in August.
All right. So you, you leave it open sort of the way that Michelle was recommending. And, uh, what else was it? I thought I was, I thought I had something else to say. Maybe not.
That's, you know, that's the big news, it was that one there. I know that you're gonna be talking to Chris Nation up here. He just started, uh, Norfolk Landing. We have De Martino's doing one at the end of, uh, what is that, Mill River Heights. Chris, when he gets up here, you know, I'll tell you that he's run into some wonderful material there. Not enough of it. He's, he needs to build grade and stuff like that, but I won't steal his thunder. So we'll keep an eye on that, uh, we'll keep an eye on the Mill River Heights. Saddle Ridge is still out there. There's a handful out there, and, um, as construction season starts up, I'll give you a, a round of reports, one K's and all.
I hear rocks being ground every day back there, so they must be going gangbusters back there.
Well, they have another. They have Metcalf Materials up there and there's a, you know, so they're doing, and then they got a crushing machine up there. So there's a, there's a bunch of players up there, and I, I never stopped to ask what the, what the setup is, so.
All right, so we'll just get, we, we, we'll send the letter out as quickly as we can.
Appreciate it.
All right, thanks. Anything else?
No, that's good. I'm gonna hang around. I think there's a couple of things that, um, you might have a couple of questions for me. The agenda coming up. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
All right, thanks.
Thanks for being here on MacArthur.
Yeah. Eight, ten, okay. Eight, ten, yeah. Wright's Farm Road. Now, do we have a, a, we have a cost of completion?
Right here.
Wright's Farm Road. Where is Wright's Farm Road? Is that, oh?
It's a left off a castle.
Oh, okay. That's Keeney Pond Estates.
Purchased from the former Mr. Wright.
Oh, cottage car, what?
Yeah, I grabbed the wrong one too.
Yeah, he held it up. I, I did it by you.
Here it is.
Are you ready?
Yeah, we're ready.
Ready, Nate?
Go right ahead.
My name is John Weddleton. I'm from Professional Developers, and the reason I am here tonight is to request a bond release for four lots in my subdivision, uh, on Wright Farm Road. We send, uh, the DPW the plans arrebatable to this section of roadway, and Bob has put together a cost of completion. And we had one question, uh, together that I'll let him speak on, on the, uh, detention basin, uh, pine trees that were on the plan. Right, right now, the, the basin was cut out of a three-acre pine grove, and around the top slope of the basin is a balance of the pine grove, which are all forty to sixty-foot pine trees. My engineers on the plan call for a five-inch white pines to be placed five feet apart, three feet deep, which I never caught on the planning, but I don't know if that even works. But anyways, to, to put the, uh, required trees in would require taking down the existing forty to sixty-foot pine trees, which seemed a little bit, uh, redundant, so, uh, Bob and I went out and looked at the basin. And over that time, since most of this basin is gravelly soil, uh, the whole inside of the basin that years ago, four or five years ago, was loomed and seeded. Right now is solid white pines, and they're about four-foot seedlings. They cover all of the basin area. The only thing that's clear is actually the easement that we use to actually develop the basin. the basin, which is also required not to have any trees in the easement for future use. So right now, the question I had, and Bob is gonna speak on it, is the matter on how to handle the estimate here for the pine trees. He's put, I think he's put on the plan, cost to complete, eighty trees, which are the three rows of white pines going around two-thirds of this basin. That's approximately four hundred feet. And this basin, since it was built, never has standing water. But I will let Bob take it over from here since he's visited the site and we had spoke on it.
One sec. I just wanted to pass this to you. This is a couple of aerial shots. Maybe, maybe it just helps you to understand. This is a shot from an aerial in 2008. And this is roughly the same shot last year. You can see that-
Oh, oh, yeah.
In 2008, it was, it was constructed, and it was constructed before that. But you could see there was, wasn't as much growth as, these white pines, when they take, they get to growing, they grow like three feet a year, in some cases.
Where's the drainage basin on there? Is that?
The whole thing is the drainage. Yeah, the whole thing. You could have a football game in there. Yeah.
It is. So to the right of thirty-three, this is where the end of Castle Road rounds out? Okay.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Well, I know it's good to have trees there because they take up more water than almost anything else does, but is it appropriate to have one of these drainage basins completely filled with pine trees? Or is it questionable?
I don't think it's possible.
Oh, okay.
Just so you know, Steve, the first section of roadway, the first twenty-five-hundred feet that was accepted, and those basins were gone, loomed and seeded, they're all solid white pine forest, and which are probably most of the basins in Norfolk. They just got inhabited. The water table is so low here, sometimes you get the cat nine tails in the mixture. These are all planted with actually the London Wildflower seed mix. So initially, they had a lot of color, but the way the soil is and the drainage, the cat nine tails don't survive. And what you have is just an infiltration of bringing that pine grove right back to its natural state. So right now, as I said, they're four feet. And my guess is in the next four, five years, they'll probably be at least twice that and fully covered, so.
You have the retention basin and the sandy soil, it's very dry. You have water in there immediately after a storm event, but after that, it gets bone dry. Those pines should do just fine. I like it there.
So releasing lot numbers, sorry, Steve, you got thirty-one, thirty-two.
Well, I'm just wondering, let's go back to this.
I was just curious from a reference standpoint, Steve. You got, is it the thirty-three eleven that's shown on these? Or what are those red numbers?
Those are lot numbers. But I didn't, I didn't do that for that purpose. I just wanted to show you.
Lot numbers we're looking to release are thirty-one and thirty-two, and across the street, sixteen and seventeen.
Okay. It just doesn't reference?
Not relevant.
Right, okay. Those numbers have no relevance to it. Okay. Does, I mean, after reviewing what these look like, does anyone have any objection to removing the bulk of these eighty pine trees?
Nope.
I mean, I'd like to remove most of them, but keep a couple just in case at some point we say, no, there's none growing there, we should put them in.
That was gonna be our plan. We were gonna go back, they would selectively see where we could find some spots to put some. But honestly speaking, the infiltration of the pine trees that are going up the basin and up the slope and infiltrating with the natural pine grove, it's, it's pretty inclusive.
What if we reduce it to, say, twenty? Or something like that?
To take twenty, well, I'll let Bob talk because maybe I'm not objecting about it.
I, that's, Steve, whatever you say is good. I know that right now, what's more important, the function of it or the looks of it?
Well.
A little of both.
A little of both, yeah.
So functionally, it's overkill. It's, that would take on an ocean. And so it's doing its job.
We have a customer that's looking at one of these lots, which is why I'm here. And I talked to him before I came to the meeting this afternoon, and of course, obviously, he'd prefer to have nothing done because to put trees on lot thirty-one would mean taking down a bunch of the existing trees that are forty, fifty feet high.
We're only gonna, we're only gonna reduce it, you know, it looks to me as though it's, do you agree that it looks like it's got plenty of pine trees growing there? The, because, but I do wanna-
These are different trees.
Huh?
The eighty trees were gonna be in a different lot. The retention basin was never gonna have trees in it.
Well, on the, yeah, but these are for the slopes of the basin, aren't they?
And that's where the pine forest is, correct. The little ones are inside the basin that have just grown.
So I figure if we just hold on to twenty-five percent of them, because we've seen the pictures, but if anyone wants to take a walk through and maybe determine, no, they don't need any more pine trees here, or, yeah, this is where we should put some, they're a little thin over here, you know? That might be what people want to do.
Yeah.
What do you think, Bob?
Just to be clear, if, it's difficult to go out there right now and appreciate what it would look like in the summer because it's snow-packed. And like John mentioned, a little bit of cat nine tails, which are all part of, you know, the basin area where they really suck up the water and there's some, maybe even wildlife in there. But there's some work that needs to be done out there. I just didn't know how to identify it there. That's why I put, I struck a line through that. Because I know that there's a day's work of small equipment work out there. There's a couple of motorcycle kids that have gone through there and ripped some trail that needs to be re-loomed. And maybe some planting, but I think that'd be fair, at least to hold that kind of money there for a-
Just, yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty-five percent of it, because it does look as though it's, no, you're thinking that it's, they haven't reestablished in the, in the location where these pine trees would go?
No, that's not what I'm hearing. I'm, when I, but I was, what I was, what I was suggesting is that the smaller trees were at the base of the basin and that they weren't the same eighty trees that were on the estimate, 'cause we would never have requested trees in that location. So-
Well, he said in the, on the top, yeah.
Right, so he clarified that.
Oh, okay.
And then Bob gave a very eloquent description of what's going on out there, so I couldn't add anything to that.
So reducing it by seventy-five percent is probably not unreasonable?
It's cautious.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the damage you were talking about, wouldn't that be in the right of way? Is that the malign item above the one that we're talking about? Because you have tree planting.
I have tree planting in the right of way, and I did a calculation based on the rules and regs because some of the design, I think, back when it was designed, I talked to John a little bit about it, the trees, there's some trees there proposed with tree pits, but the trees aren't there anymore. They've just, and there's been no development. The trees must've just fell over and died because they're just not there. And they're existing as it's, not proposed, but existing. So I just-
The right of way? Is that?
They're pretty close to the right of way.
Yeah, they're right on the border. And then there's like a retainer wall there and there's nothing to retain. And I think that's off-site anyways, but. So I just, but the trees that you're talking about, I calculated every forty feet for four hundred and fifty feet, both sides. And it's not much different than I think what was proposed anyways, but they were configured in different areas to complement what was existing, which really isn't existing anymore, so.
I mean, if Bob is comfortable with the reduction, I'm comfortable.
Okay.
But there is work in the retention area. Don't want you to think I didn't say that. There's, there's just a, you know, a good day's work with a couple pieces of equipment.
So what does this reduce the twelve thousand down to?
Did you? Did you?
It uses it down to three thousand.
Three, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it is. That's easy, isn't it?
Yes, the new math.
I had brought a tri-potty agreement and a farm release for the lots that has to be recorded, the registry. I did not fill in a dollar amount on the tri-potty, knowing that something was gonna change. But if you can come up with a number for the trees, I could change Bob's forty-five-thousand-dollar figure by that number and plug that into the tri-potty agreement, assuming you're willing to vote and sign it.
So that forty-five included the twelve? I haven't done the math down the line yet.
Yes, it did.
It doesn't.
So, I mean, you'd have to-
Saying it doesn't.
So we're only going to add three thousand to this?
It would be more like sixty thousand if you add, whatever the math would be. The twelve is not in that calc.
You're gonna-
Or the twenty-five percent.
Oh, it's not in the calc.
No, twenty-five percent looks like it is. It looks like it's thirty-six and then twenty-five percent?
Forty-five is before the twelve, correct?
The twelve, I thought the twelve was in the math.
What you need to do is thirty-six, four fifty, add to that, and then put the twenty-five into that.
Add three?
So you don't get twenty-five percent on your trees. Thirty-nine, four fifty. You get a straight on your trees. You could get a straight number on your trees instead of a contingency.
Thirty-nine, four fifty times-
Seven hundred and forty dollars?
Ninety-eight, sixty-three?
Nine, eight, six, three. Subdivision's always a bit better with mature trees and new trees added together. So I get forty-nine, three, one, three. It's a little bit more random.
It's excessive to take down trees. I mean, the whole thing's to drink water and it's doing its job.
Look at them all do their math.
Ninety-eight, sixty-two, fifty. Ninety-eight, sixty-three.
So forty-nine, three, one, three, is your total.
Yep, that's what I got.
Forty-nine, three, one, three.
Well, it's thirty-nine, four fifty for the estimate with a contingency of nine, eight, six, three.
Right.
And a total cost of forty-nine, three, one, three.
So I'll plug that in?
Yes.
The dollar amount.
So what I would need to transact on this lot, which is scheduled for the end of the month, is a vote to approve the farm age release of lots, sixteen, seventeen, thirty-one, and thirty-two.
Well, let's approve the cost estimate first.
Someone wanna make a motion to?
Make a motion to?
Gino had some.
Oh, go ahead, Gino.
Is this road, this road has monolithic burn as opposed to granite?
This is the one that is-
Oh, to match the castle hill?
In between, yeah, it's to match the other one, yeah.
It wasn't one of those McGee monolithic.
Let's not talk about this. Ever see made-of-G Krebs? You say work?
This is the one you asked us for the waiver on because it didn't match the other one, right?
All right, I make a motion to approve the cost of complete, the preserve at Kinney Pond Wright's Farm Road, Station thirteen plus zero to eight plus zero, four hundred and fifty feet, for the total amount of forty-nine, three, one, three.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Gotta get the money done first. All right. Does anyone have any objections to releasing lots on this roadway? Nope. Someone wanna make a motion to release these lots?
Move to release lots thirty-one, thirty-two, seventeen, and sixteen as part of the preserve at Kinney Pond Wright's Farm Road.
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, done.
Tri-potty? Along the tri-potty agreement?
That's what we, that's what we use commonly, right? Yeah.
Yeah. You wanna super bowl on that? You've done that in the past.
Oh, do we vote to have a tri-potty?
We could just sign it, I think, right?
Yeah, I think you approve the amount, you could just sign it, sure.
Yeah, we approve the amount.
You'll leave that with me, John, and I'll have them sign it and I'll notarize the signatures.
Yeah, it has to be notarized, yeah, thank you.
You can sign it tonight. Yeah? Okay. You're just notarizing our signatures, right? You don't need, okay.
I have to take this to the bank and get them to sign it and bring it back to Betsy, and I have to get the lot release form recorded and bring her back the form with the recorded information.
Anything else? Anything else, John? No? While we're waiting for that, we're just gonna move along. We can sign this as we continue our hearings.
Yep.
So we're gonna continue the hearing for, no, no, it's not a hearing.
Review.
Yeah, it's, continue our review of two forty-two Dedham Street, Leo's Landing and Pondville Plaza, site plans for endorsement.
About the Tom?
Uh, we do.
Okay, if you wanna introduce yourself?
Thank you, Attorney Louis Cacavero with Alan Quagliari. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I think where we left off last, there was a consensus, if I characterize it wrong, stop me, but I think there was a consensus between Mr. Quagliari and the board that new drainage reports would be crafted for both projects in question, and new surveys would be done for both projects in question, and that those would be presented to you for review and acceptance as a minor modification. I think that's procedurally the way you wanted to proceed. So we've done that. We've presented to you both surveys and drainage reports by a new surveyor, Mr. O'Driscoll, who you have met, and drainage reports prepared by Mr. American, who you know of. And I believe that those have been also reviewed by your consultant, and we're happy to answer questions.
Well, I think that we're going to have to hear from our engineering consultant here. He has reviewed them. So Tom, do you have any comments?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I think that the attorney has adequately summarized the status of where we are at this point. We have received, and I'm speaking of two forty-two Dedham Street, we have received a new land survey plan that was signed and sealed by Mr. O'Driscoll, who is a professional land surveyor in Massachusetts. It is, in fact, a new survey plan. It is similar to the old plan, but it has been redrawn and bears his signature and seal. So we are satisfied with respect to the fact that a proper land survey has been done for the property. We did review the drainage report that was submitted by American Engineering LLP. It is signed and sealed by Richard American, who is a properly registered professional engineer in the Commonwealth, a firm that I am familiar with, and in fact, I used to work with Mr. American a number of years ago. So the report is done in accordance with standard engineering practice and with the rules and regulations of the board. We did issue a report just today, which does include some nineteen points, I guess I'd call them, technical revisions that we're looking for in the, in the calculations. But in general, they are properly done and comply with standard engineering practice. The, I don't recall what our position was on the drawings. They have not been reissued at this point. I don't know what the intent is there.
Oh, you're talking about the site plan without the-
The site plan itself, yes. But the survey is acceptable. The drainage report has standard technical revisions that we'd like to see, but it's generally acceptable.
Now, isn't that something that we said that was gonna be done, is that everything- Now, isn't that something that we said that was going to be done, is that everything was just going to be overlaid, it can all be done electronically, isn't that what?
I think you wanted to be certain that the existing condition survey was competent. And what we've endeavored to do is have Mr. O'Driscoll redo that work from scratch to satisfy you that the existing condition survey was competent. And he's affixed his stamp to a new survey that shows existing conditions. Now, remember, for two forty-two, you've already approved this. This is, these are things we've offered to do to sort of satiate your concerns.
Right, right. But there's, do you see any issue with not redrawing all the plans or because there's no real changes to the survey plan?
Our position was, we recommended that the board not endorse the drawings, being as the drawings have not been revised, we would maintain that position.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think that was debated at length last time.
Yeah, and I thought that the way we left it was that everything was going to be overlaid onto the new survey plans. I, you know, like, does anyone else remember what the final outcome of that was? Jeff, do you remember that?
I don't. I tell you, we've gone round and round on this. I don't remember either.
I think, didn't we, you took a vote, I'm just trying to help everybody's collective memory here, didn't you take a vote on Zero Valley to substitute the new drawings in for the old?
Are we talking about Pondville Plaza or two forty-two?
That's, I think that's the vote that was taken, was on Pondville Plaza. And at that last meeting, we also said, well.
The vote that was taken was that we were going to replace the survey plan, two projects I had to perform.
Right.
The drainage report and the survey plan. You accepted Howard Millard's engineering, I didn't have to bring Howard Millard back, but Howard stated that he didn't have great involvement with the drainage, that's why you wanted the drainage done over.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Yeah, so.
I think it really was the surveying, engineering portion of the set of documents that we had reviewed, as well as the drainage calc, those are the two outstanding that I remember.
So the fact that there's a new survey plan that is not on the final drawings, is, are you okay with that?
Do we have a set of?
Well, I have my line here to insert.
And my expectation was you would accept that as a minor modification, we'd record it, I guess is what you'd want us to do.
Do we have a set of the complete?
Yes.
Complete set of the plans?
Right there.
Yeah, that is what we voted on. Look at the minutes.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, Michelle had brought up a point, and I just want to make sure we've addressed it in terms of, you know, when the project is complete, there's going to have to be as-built and stuff.
There's difference, but they are different.
Given the documentation that we're going to be left with if we were to move forward, are we going to be able to get adequate as-built plans and those documents, right? Isn't that the point, because you agree? And so I just want to get some clarification on that. But in the future, there's going to be some additional documents and what is, what is, in terms of the applicant's ability to provide documents in terms of as-built, which would adequately reflect the project as-built? In terms of what they're proposing, would that be compromised in any way in terms of as-built, the way they've approached this, in terms of the information that we have in front of us?
You could simply do an as-built, and it would reflect both what was constructed and what is actually there now. The, there aren't significant differences in the topography. If you look at the surveys side by side, I mean, they have the high points in kind of the same place. What I think makes the survey now in accord with the rules and regulations of the board of professional engineers and land surveyors is, the surveyor has actually redrawn the survey, so that although the contours are in about the same place, they're shaped a little differently, they intersect the building a little, it's clearly a completely new survey at this point.
For existing conditions?
Yes, but it's, and it's not.
You'll change the proposed?
Yeah.
Would it change the proposed?
It's not significant.
It's, it's, I don't think there were any areas that deviated by more than half a foot. I mean, it's, it's similar.
I mean, we've had a lot of time to think about this since the last time the applicant came before us, and, you know, for me personally, if I were to ask you the question, Tom, whether there's any additional risk in terms of the project, in terms of the quality of, you know, the job, if you will, when all is said and done, and if you were to tell me that, no, we really have all the information, we're going to be able to get adequate as-built, then I would like to be able to move forward and, you know, see this property developed. I think procedurally, you know, there is issues in terms of how all this took place, and, you know, we were in a situation where we were trying to manage through a difficult situation with the applicant. But if we can get to the point where you feel that technically, from a technical standpoint, purely technical standpoint, that the town is protected, you know, the folks who may purchase this project and this property from the applicant are going to be adequately protected in terms of the plans and, you know, from a technical standpoint, then I think it's time to move forward.
Yeah, I don't think the as-built is at question. The as-built will simply record what's there, both reflecting existing conditions as they accurately are and proposed. I think as an engineer who is registered by the Board of Registration, and the purpose of that registration process is the protection of the public's safety. I have some concerns about the way in which the proposed site plan was prepared, just in terms of who prepared it and the degree of oversight that the registered professional engineer was going to provide. That's an impression I have based upon about an hour and a half interview. So that's why I very reluctantly recommended that the board not endorse the plans. But two key pegs are now in position that weren't at the time. We have a properly prepared set of drainage calculations, subject to some revisions, and we have a properly prepared land survey. The survey is different, but not significantly so, from the former survey that was used throughout the project. But I think that's where we are.
So then the only other question I would have, you've brought up some legitimate technical questions in terms of some things that may need to be worked out, or perhaps you've already worked them out, I don't know.
No, we actually just got the report on Thursday, so this is hot off the presses here. I have not had any discussions with Dan American at this point.
And we just got the comments at four thirty today.
Well, the drainage report on which? I'm getting lost.
Two forty-two.
All right, so we're strictly talking about two forty-two. I thought at the outset, you said that everything looked okay on your nineteen points here. Was that regarding the drainage report, or?
I said I think that the nineteen points can be addressed. I don't think there's anything that's a showstopper here.
Oh, okay. I got the impression that, okay.
And we. Let's go through it, I'm game, let's go through it.
And we haven't, we just got those at four thirty. I guess one of, we would want to take some time and determine why weren't these comments on the first drainage report? Because there's some issues that he brings up that apparently are identical to the original report. Why weren't those concerns nineteen points made the first time around? Remember, this is a project you already approved, so we're trying to offer you a new drainage report just to satisfy you that everything here is kosher.
Well, there were certainly, you know, a number of irregularities with this project, so I'm not sure I would personally be interested in going there. Let's just work through it and hopefully get to the point where we can.
Well, I mean.
They don't have an engineer with them, right? Or do you?
No, we didn't.
Well, not only that, but I mean, if they just got it, I'm sure that they could work out their drainage issues, if any, but Tom has even said that it seems okay at a cursory review stage. Is this what you really want to sit there and do on our time right now?
And the drainage calculations have been prepared by an engineer he's worked with and recognized, and he said he's comfortable with the professionalism of the engineer.
One of the things I did when I hired Rick was, Rick American was to talk about the history of this, what he would be doing, that there was already, I gave him the original report. And so on page fifteen, he has a conclusion, and I can read it to you, or, you know, you can read it yourself, but it gives his professional opinion. You know, the proposed development, a new commercial building and parking slash garage, excuse me, gas service area, to be constructed on an existing developed commercial site will result in no degradation in the quality of stormwater discharges. All discharges from a new impervious surfaces are treated and infiltrated in accordance with the stormwater regulations. All runoff from the impervious surfaces will be fully treated, I don't have my reading glasses, sorry, included as attachment F is a checklist included within Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, Volume Three, Chapter Two. So that was his conclusion, and he stamped it. And I thought that was the concern, that get a second look at this to verify that the first drainage report was actually accurate.
I mean, I think you're real close to getting what you're looking for. My feeling, I don't want to put myself, you know, in a position where I'm making decisions as an engineer. I mean, I am an engineer, but not this type of engineer, so, you know, if these, particularly if they're not too difficult for us to implement and influence the project, I don't know why we wouldn't do that. You know, particularly given that this has been such a, you know, in terms of the process that we've gone through, there's been so many detours and such, and I think we're ready to move forward. But I would certainly want to have the, you know, the support of Mr. Houston in so doing, to me personally.
Well, I agree that we should go, have their engineer go over the nineteen points. And anything that is new, I think they should just comment and say, this wasn't covered, this was not required before, so, you know, like, we don't feel so it's necessary to do it. But there's certain things that are in here that really should be in the report that he's recommending. So if you need to talk to Tom, I'm going to let them talk to you again, Tom.
Pleasure.
Then you can talk to him, or have your engineer talk to him, because there's, there are some things in here that I see that I think, well, if this wasn't covered before we made our decision the first time, it shouldn't be done now. There's certain things that I see in here, but not everything.
You said should or shouldn't, and didn't.
I think they should not have to be done if we didn't require them the first time. But there are some things in here that came from the groundwater study and the stormwaters, the drainage, that is just information that's left off the report. So that should all be put in, that's what Tom's requesting. But, does anyone disagree with that? Because I was, I was going to ask if anyone thought that it was okay, because personally, I think that we've got what we asked for as far as the new survey. We've got the stormwater and redesign, it's not redesign, it's just recalculated, right? And these are the two things that we really asked for, so.
Because my only question is how, how do you qualify that of these nineteen, which ones he should pay attention to versus which ones he shouldn't?
Well, I mean, this is why these guys have to talk to each other, and Tom can say, oh, okay, yeah, that wasn't covered the first time.
Well, you know, by way of example, the infiltration rate or the exfiltration rate, whatever you want to call it, out of the basins.
Which one are you looking at?
I'm looking at number three. It's an exfiltration rate of one point two seven five inches per hour was used, whereas it really should have been one point oh two. So it's overstated by twenty-some-odd percent, so they should probably just rerun that, it's not a, not a big deal, but.
I don't understand why this wasn't caught on the first time if we reviewed this.
Well, this is their new calculations, that's why he's noticing their new calculations. This is the report that just came to him.
It's a new engineer.
Yeah, but the soil boring logs, was that a requirement originally, or was that something that's been added in? That's one of the things.
That's required under the current rules and regulations. I think the board before had allowed the acceptance of off-site testing in Louisville-on-site. So we raised it as an issue, it's something we can talk to the engineer about.
So the board has already discussed that?
The board discussed that before.
That's one of the things that I would say, did we have soil, did we have soil logs from, was it Ugo site, or?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, I remember. So, so that's one of the things that I was thinking, let's not include that, because that's something that was discussed and we covered. I think that Tom's just bringing it back to our attention, what we had already talked about.
That's fine.
There must be a couple of other ones that are just like that, and you guys can talk about.
Yeah, that's normally what we do.
Just so we can keep track of all the players here, so all your concerns on numbers one through nineteen in this memo is strictly American-driven, so.
Yeah, we just.
You have a history and a working relationship with Rick American, I'm sure, so you guys can go through and hammer this out.
Any comments specific to the new survey plan?
No, other than that I inspected it to understand that it was, in fact, a new survey plan, and it was on the new surveyor's title block and signed and sealed by him, so.
That's the only other thing, I think we should just set our eyes on the new plan. If we haven't physically seen that plan ourselves, we, you know, he has it here tonight, we should just, as an order of business.
Are you talking about the survey plan?
Yes.
Yeah, we should take a look at it, but does everyone think that the design for the site should be laid over the new survey plan? Or is it acceptable to take it over the old survey plan because there's not significant changes to the old survey plan?
Based on what Tom said, I'm in the latter position, that we can.
I kind of am, too.
Yep.
You agree? Peter, you agree?
It's fine, I mean.
Yeah, it's unanimous that we'll accept it with the old survey plan, because you have a new survey plan that doesn't really change anything.
And we've met the surveyor, he's come before us. Can I give you the assignment?
Jeff raised the issue, though, if you accept, if you accept the proposed conditions on the old survey, you want the as-built plan to be shown on the correct survey.
Correct one, right.
On the correct survey.
The new one.
And so you, in bringing this forward as a minor mod, you're saying, you don't have to do the work of laying over the information, but in construction, you better pay attention to the existing survey, because that's what, that's what you're going to use for insubstantial conformance with, right?
The very nature of the as-built should require them to do that.
Yeah, but he won't be, he, you know, what's the baseline? He's got to be in conformance with the existing survey, not the, not the proposed site plan.
Right, right.
You know, just in case, he did it, he only looked at it for an hour and a half, if, just in case, you know, it turns into be something, you want to be able to build, you want to be able to approve an as-built.
Let's, wait a second, but pardon my ignorance here, isn't an as-built plan a completely developed site?
Yeah.
It's, it should be a resurvey of the developed site.
Therefore, a completely.
Use this as new.
It's, it's a new survey.
Right.
It's a new resurvey.
So overlay or not overlay, is it a moot point?
It has to conform with the new grading, no matter what.
That's what I'm.
So no matter what, it has to conform with the grading that's on the site plan.
Are the benches the same and everything like that? I mean, is it a technically? Are the benches the same and everything like that? I mean, is it a technically?
I'm, I'm stupid here. I'm not following this at all.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Usually when the professional plan is messy, it's usually messy in something like a benchmark and the elevations, you know?
That's what the whole purpose of an as-built is, isn't it?
I'm not sure exactly where we're going here.
I don't know what we're talking about.
Okay, don't, don't worry about it, bud. Don't worry about it.
The reason for this second survey, and if you guys could remember a little bit, is Odhriscoll sat here in front of you and said to you, the survey matched up identical, the original survey, but it was insistent that he do the second one. He, he basically said it was a waste of time because the first one, the second one is identical to the first one. There are mass highway bounds, there are iron pipes on the corners. So there is no change in the survey, and, and, and the, and the surveyor has testified to that in front of you. Ian also provided a second plan, which is just about identical to the first one. So the as-built will be on a CAD, and that'll tie into those bounds, those mass highway bounds, those iron pipes at the corner. The grade will be established. I believe it's, uh, I believe there's a hydrant that has an elevation on it, and that's how this project will be built, and that will be the reference point. So I know one's chasing stone bounds, you know, four thousand feet down the road here.
Was it really before November, the last time we saw you?
No.
No.
No, it was the twenty-fifth of, uh, January.
Survey date is November fifth.
But I was sort of, I was under the impression last time that we sort of closed all the loops, and that I could, if I accomplished these tasks, that I could get these plans signed tonight.
I'm curious, though, if you had it, why not?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the engineer is just raising questions from the story.
Why is this dated November fifth?
That's when he did all his field work.
He didn't actually plot it until after we met with you, and you asked him to do so.
The plan is dated November fifth, not his signature's a dated November fifth.
When I said he did, when, when he said he did the survey, and it was identical to that, I think that's about the time that he matched these two up. He just printed out a new plan and stamped it.
So it is different than the other survey, right?
It, it is.
Do we have the original?
It's different in terms of the topography, which I think it should be, but it's not different in terms of the boundary. In other words, if you look at this two-hundred contour, on the old survey, the two-hundred contour was in about the same place, but it didn't have that little indent, and it was slightly differently shaped, but there's a two-hundred-foot contour in that area, and that's what I would expect to see when a new person comes in and surveys a site. The bounds are well-defined, the boundary isn't gonna change, but I made the statement before, no two surveyors can do topography of the site and have it come out exactly the same. Like, see this sort of peninsula-shaped contour in the driveway? The old plan had the same two-oh-five contour there, it was slightly differently shaped, which is what I thought would happen when a person re-topoed a site.
So it's not gonna affect the as-built?
No, I don't thi- no, no. It, it's, I, I think typically within half a foot.
Right.
Half a foot maximum, and, um.
But they have to match the, the, the grades that they have on their signed plan, no matter what.
They have to match those grades, that's correct. The question is, how much does it deviate from existing?
Now, John, did you have a comment over there?
Yeah, I'm a little confused. Doug?
It's the only one we have tonight, sorry.
In the end, the only plan that matters is the as-built plan. The as-built plan is the one that's the final document. I have known of nothing that is built exactly to the grades and, and the perspectives of a signed plan by the board. As a matter of fact, if in the first section of my subdivision, if I had recorded my signed plans that were done by my engineers and the towns' engineers, which was Judith Nitch at the time, now Tom Houston, I have a thousand feet of drainage running uphill. We found substantial mistakes in the plans all throughout. If those are ever accounted for, then, boy, I would have had a problem as far as the road working. Whether it is two surveys or not, this is gonna be as-built to the end. I guarantee you, there's not a machine operator around that's gonna have these grades to the half foot. What's gonna happen is, is mine was a root, and there's some things that have to work in the field. You don't make it on a plan. And the, the job of, of the reviewer of the engineering firm that approves this as-built to be recorded is that, does this work? As it's built, with the grades, et cetera, regardless of whether they're exactly like the original plan or whether they're different, do these grades work? Because when you're out there doing a lot of buildings and roadway, you're constantly making adjustments in the field, because the plans endorsed are almost never, number one, fully correct, and number, nothing against Tom Houston, and number two, it's impossible to hold these exact grades when you're doing a big project. So I'm lost if there's a survey done, even though it's not exactly the same as the other one, the only one that's gonna matter is the one when the road, the job's completed. That's the one that'll be reviewed, it's gonna work, and it's gonna be endorsed and recorded. And I speak up here, too, because when I started this whole thing, and unfortunately I had to find some person that was committing improprieties in this whole project, which, you know, I, I sort of feel partly responsible for, and there was damage here to people unknowing. And following this thing all the way through, I see Al here, who I don't know well, but he's been through our board once or twice, and, uh, I think he's been an effort to try to make this right. I know he spent a lot of money. I know we need the development, and, uh, as far as I'm concerned, him and, and Peter both are just a victim of the circumstances, and, you know, the way this is, and I, I know the Merrick people, too, and they're outstanding, uh, you know, I think that as an applicant myself, I think what he's looking for is maybe a vote to endorse contingent on the adjustments being made so everybody's happy.
I think that you, you just stated exactly the direction that we're heading in. That's what it sounds like on the board.
Absolutely. I think the only thing, and, and, and I think maybe there's a disagreement, I mean, I can't speak to all of these nineteen points that PSC has raised, but those stem from the stormwater report that was really the most recent piece of the puzzle that now we have. So I don't know that I can vote to endorse without having some idea as to whether some of these, all of these, certainly the ones that are important, legitimate, what have you, that they get addressed. That's, that's me personally, but I think we're real close to where you want us to be. The sooner we get there, the better, as far as I'm concerned.
Why can't we vote to endorse, subject to a satisfactory review between the two engineers?
That's where I am, Peter. I, I would support that.
You know what, to be honest with you, I want to see some buildings go up. We've started building up one A, one fifteen, three years ago. That is what we do here. We've signed a lot of plans, we don't have a lot of buildings. You know, we're not in the endless plan business, we're in the building business, we need the tax base. When are we gonna move forward on this? The whole situation, and thank you for speaking up, John, is unfortunate, miserable, but we're trying to get to the end of it. We told this guy last time, when we had his eighty-nine-year-old engineer in here, had his surveyor in here, and everything else, get us a drainage report, get us a survey plan. I, I assume that, uh, Mr. Billard, uh, 'cause it was the first time I met him, satisfied the other concern that, one, he actually lives, works, breathes, and he did what he said he did. We take him at his word. So how do we get past the never-ending inertia of ancient history and move forward? What kind of direction can we give this guy tonight?
I think I, I think I communicated that pretty clearly. It's just, it's, it's right here. This is part of the stormwater plan that was the last piece that was just received. So to ignore this in terms of PSC's comments is basically to ignore the stormwater.
Well, we can vote to endorse, but not, not endorse until we get this information as Tom has recommended, or the conversation between the two. So we can vote to endorse, but we won't endorse, and we can actually, if people don't mind, if, if Tom makes a, 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 a good conversation, they get, and they agree on everything, and they let us know that they agree on these things, and they send, Tom sends us something, if, if we could just call, uh, a time for us just to get together to sign this plan, would that be agreeable to anybody?
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's what we'll do, is once we get the information, we'll, 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 we'll make a motion to endorse, but we're not gonna sign the plan until this work is done, and we'll, we'll, we'll post a meeting, we'll get together, and we'll just sign. You won't have to be here unless there's something wrong. But is that agreeable? It's reasonable.
It's just that Tom has been against this project support.
You know what, that's. Al, 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 I disagree with you here. But let's try to move forward.
He's not gonna know what I'm gonna say, so you don't know how you're gonna disagree.
No, but we, we, we know what you're gonna say.
Well, it's out of his mouth. He doesn't recommend approving it, and so I keep going backwards when I'm given directions to go forward. So I'm hoping that he solves these problems, but I can't guarantee that they're not gonna go backwards.
Al, I'm just guessing that there are a lot of planning boards in the Commonwealth that wouldn't move forward with us because of their irregularities. I'm just guessing.
Yes, and it's.
So we, we wanna support it. So we're almost there, hanging there. We'll get there.
Is this the protocol we're gonna use for vote?
Well, you know, I, I think that the other one, we've already, we've already signed. You were just providing us with, with additional information, right?
Yeah, we've already approved and signed that one, have we?
So, yeah, I think you just have to vote to accept the drainage report as part of.
You reviewed that one, too, right? There's no comments on that one?
We are in the process of reviewing that. I actually, I was operating under the premise that the board had actually signed the other one.
We did.
I put this out of the goodness of my heart.
We did, we did.
At, at a large expense to me.
Yep.
So what we'll do is, we'll, we'll do both of them at the same day, same meeting, and, and it'll be after we get something from Tom, and, and Tom, if you run into the same issues on the other one, just let them know, gotta do this, 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 and this, and, and we'll just get together as soon as you let us know what your report, what the final standing is, we'll just, you know, as soon as we can post a meeting, that's what we'll do.
So therefore, the introduction on page two of the PSC report for this Leo's Landing, and I state, PSC respectfully recommend the board not endorse drawings for this due to preparation survey site drainage, paraphrasing, by an unregistered person. With everything that's here tonight, is that done and satisfied?
No. Is, is this a holdover from an old report? Is that?
He's, Tom spoke to that earlier. He said he had the two missing pegs, so.
Yeah.
Site plan's the only one that's.
Longer is valid. Which the board has taken the position, the plan is not required.
Okay. So does someone want to make a motion?
Make a motion, Peter. You articulated it.
For both of them, well, separately, but we haven't discussed the other one, right? Do we have anything to discuss?
We have, we have nothing to discuss on either one.
Well, we're not gonna, we're gonna do the same thing. We're not gonna sign it until Tom has reviewed and discussed.
We've already signed it.
We don't have to sign anything with it.
Oh, no, we don't have to sign it, but Tom's just gonna report back. Yes.
On the other, I provided an additional survey plan along with the drainage report to the tool of about seven thousand dollars. It wasn't necessary, so I don't need, I just need the survey signed if we want to add that to the Pondville Plaza, if we do.
Okay, let's do, let's digest Leo's Landing and put that to bed. Okay.
Let's do that. Is that all right, guys?
Yep.
Separate project.
I make a motion that we vote to endorse, but not release, the Leo's Landing, what is it, site plan? My, oh, Mylar, see, thank you. I'm so confused at this point. Subject to satisfactory view and agreement between the American Engineering, author of the drainage report, and our town engineer, PSC.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Did you say hi?
Oh, okay. Okay, now, should we digest the other part? Should we accept the drainage report? Where are we with this?
Well, Tom says he's still reviewing it, right?
Okay, so it's already been submitted, then? No, it's just, it, it's just additional information, because it's not changing the site plan, right? The new.
Supplemental information.
Yeah, it's just supplemental information.
I think the other project is more in the lap of the board of health.
Is it?
Yes.
Well, you're still reviewing it, right?
We are, yes.
And we'll just, we'll, we'll just, uh, accept your results, but if you run into the same problems, just have the negotiation and go over it all. Because they've already got a, a signed plan. And then when we meet for two forty-two, we can.
I can advise you of the.
Agenda that we will accept the drainage plan for the other one also. Is that okay? We don't have to have a motion on that.
No, it's normal action. No, no.
All right.
He has a plan for this.
Yep, yep, yep.
Excellent.
I just need the survey plan signed, or I don't.
No, no, 'cause they're not, they're, they looked at it, they're happy with it, but they're not gonna put it into the approved plan pack.
Right, not yet, not until everything, all our Ts are crossed and Is are dotted.
Yeah, it is gonna be signed by the board, and it is gonna be recorded.
Yes, it will be.
Oh, oh, it will, okay.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that we get a, a positive report from Tom, that everything that we were talking about was dealt with.
And we'll sign it at the same time we sign the, these guys here.
You're talking, no, are we flipping back the Leos here again? What are we talking about?
It doesn't hold you up for moving forward with Pondville. You have a signed set of plans.
I can't, he won't sign this up to the board.
He's glad it's a problem.
Oh.
Yeah, that's not for this board. Let's, let's not, let's not go there.
Never ends.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So I'll just, uh, email everyone to set up a meeting.
Sounds good.
Meeting?
Do we have to do it in a meeting?
Well, huh? If we're just signing, it'd probably be easy to accomplish if we even sign.
Come into the office and sign.
Oh, yeah, that's true. We could.
Does it have to be done in a meeting, or can, when Tom says it's okay?
They've already voted to endorse.
Yeah, we just have to.
You could actually endorse the plan and just.
Not release it until we say everything's fine. Yeah, all right.
Yeah, that's the way you, you motioned for it, voted to endorse, but not release.
We just didn't say we're gonna endorse it tonight, but I guess we can.
You could.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah.
It's just, I won't date it until we get the proposal put on.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
So you're gonna leave the Mylar so we can sign, right?
Yes, right there.
Yeah, all right.
Those are the original, and that's the additional.
Okay.
Do you need to take one out?
Right here, right, Al?
And do you need to take one out of the original to replace it with this?
Is that what we're doing?
Well, you have to replace that Mylar, right?
Yeah. I'll do whatever.
Is it numbered with a page on this one?
No, it's not, it's not gonna exactly match the set, so.
We better let Tom to, please, Tom.
Yeah, I think, I think you just don't endorse.
Yeah.
I think you just don't endorse this survey.
So you take that out, put this in?
You've not recorded this yet?
Okay.
And only sheet three gets recorded.
Right.
This, the whole set doesn't get recorded, just sheet three gets recorded.
Is it already eleven o'clock?
Don't sleep. It'd be worse if you go to sleep. That's my suggestion.
But this is just a set that'll be in the office, this sheet here that gets recorded. But that's fine. I'll take that with me.
Yep.
It'll never be seen again.
Okay.
Right?
All right. All set, yep.
Thank you, Al.
Oh, my God. We're up to eight forty-five.
No, we're only at eight thirty.
Oh, no. There's, uh, Chris Nation to discuss three lots and Priscilla Ave. Jeez, we're up to eight thirty. Oh, I think I remember seeing something about this. This, this is like nine lots that were combined to make three, isn't it? This is like nine lots that were combined to make three, isn't that right? Is that, is that the way it worked?
Been enjoying yourself this evening? You been enjoying yourself this evening?
Okay, microphone, where's, where's the microphone?
Do you wanna put it up there so the TV can pick it up and it can also speak?
Boy, you really did schedule this tight, didn't you?
It was a good thing one oh six, one oh eight wasn't on there.
I'm Chris Nation, representing Norfolk Development and Construction. What we're looking at is three, three separate parcels undeveloped off of Priscilla Avenue. So, I think earlier, I'd walked in during a meeting, was talking about, I believe, this piece. I didn't know anything about that, so it's just interesting, but I, unclear is some of the details is of any of it. I just, I walked into that second half of that. So, you guys are really up to speed, I think, on, on a lot of the specific concerns. But, so, so what we have is, you know, the plan here developed in nineteen forty-five. So, so we walk into it with, you know, less than desirable pieces here. It's a forty-foot right-of-way, two-hundred-feet frontage. Somewhere along the line, someone combined a little camp lot, so they, they did make two-hundred feet of frontage. Here's two-hundred and something else, I think it's, I think it's like three-hundred and ten or something. Here again is two-hundred even here. The, so, so the question is, what, what do you guys, how do you view this? You know, what, we view this as three lots that can develop, can build a home, a home, a home, a family moves in. So, how do we get there? This is the spot to not add confusion to this. This is where the tailwind circle comes in, this cul-de-sac here. There's seven lots around that. Maybe I shouldn't even mention it rather than add confusion, but, and that's us. So, and we're building a home right here as well. There's a frontage lot off Lake Shore. So, how does the board view this? Is there, from my perspective, is rebuilding lots, challenges, yes, that's why we're here.
Is Priscilla Avenue, is that constructed?
This is unimproved wooded. There is some meandering paths and what have you through that area. They are defined on other plans, not, not on, on this particular view. Again, didn't wanna create a lot of confusion here. I mean, I put up what I felt was the simplest view. So, we get frontage a- as asked for in a lot, there is frontage. Square footage works on this one, just misses it on this one, it's a little light on this one.
What about that lot in between?
Yeah, what happens there?
Small lot in between?
Um, I'm not sure which one you front to, would it be this one?
Yeah.
This is part of this property, so there's, there's, there's a well here, their well is right here. You know, roughly in the middle. So, so this is connected to that property.
So, you can site septic system far enough away from that?
I believe that within these three parcels, a home can be built and water would come from, you know, Lake Shore.
So, you're gonna pull water out?
The, the idea would be to use town water.
Okay. No, what I'm concerned about is the, you know, these smaller lots, what, with a well sitting right in between them, you obviously need to put septic systems on each one of those.
Yeah, there is distance, that, you know, the hundred foot is, you know, something like this, sure, so.
Okay. I just didn't get a scale, that's fine, all right.
Yes. And again, there, there's challenges and all those little issues need to get worked out, but I'm not sure we wanna get, I didn't even wanna get to that point yet. I need to know.
I do wanna ask about one thing that you mentioned, about two of the lots, they don't meet the square footage, you said?
Well, I'm speaking, and, and terminology is tough, I suppose, here for me too. But, meaning what's required by today's standards. But, but I didn't create these lots, these lots have been here, well, in nineteen forty-five, they were, the fifty-foot frontage ones are created with the road. And somewhere along the line, someone, someone made them bigger and grouped them as you see.
They do have to comply with today's zoning, though. So, that would be a variance, that's not something that we can waive, lot sizes.
All right, what if they're grandfathered lots? Well, that's the, that's kind of the issue, because if they have, they would be grandfathered if they had fifty feet of frontage and five thousand square feet, which they, which they have, except it's an un- unconstructed road, so it's not considered to be frontage.
So, are we back on MacArthur Avenue again?
Yeah, exactly.
It's exactly the same.
Yeah, yeah, what's, what's the grading like in this area?
It's flat, I know that area.
Oh, good.
Well.
Did you, were you here for that part of the?
I, I was, and, and that's another detail just left out of that, 'cause, 'cause the question is, is there a way to get to these and make them building lots?
With a road?
You know, you know, do you guys, will you guys entertain, you know, options? Perhaps we come in, you know, this, from my view, anything can be done, varying degrees of difficulty and cost. And, and a bunch of people come up with a bunch of different options. So, you know, do, can, can I come in from one side here? Maybe this is a cul-de-sac and there's a circle and it accesses these two. Is there something that can come in here and access this lot?
Well, then what about the middle lot? You have to have frontage on a roadway. So, you have to put a roadway in front of all three of those lots. The best thing to do is just to.
Build the road.
Go straight through. You, you, you need it to get frontage on all your lots, I mean, that's ninety percent of what you have to build is to get your own frontage. So, it makes no sense to come in a cul-de-sac on this side and try to access something over here, 'cause we have a five-hundred-foot cutoff on cul-de-sac lengths.
Aren't you going to have to bring?
Water.
Well, not only that, but aren't you gonna have to hook up to the open space subdivision too?
I was trying to, he said that was kind of your road going into the hangar.
Right, where's your, where's the, you know, the approved project?
Where's that driveway, that road?
This is gonna be.
I'm assuming Ron is your father.
Correct.
Okay, good, so I just wanna make sure.
Very, very, very roughly, that would come down here.
Okay.
You know, it's.
It didn't help, it didn't help on Priscilla Ave.
Something like this.
And this end of Priscilla Ave going that way, is that towards Miller Street?
Uh, you're saying this way?
Yeah.
Miller, um, hmm, it's not a locust here.
Way down, well.
Is Miller further?
The other end of the, run.
Does it run parallel to the Charles River?
'Cause here's River Road. So, the original entrance to the airport would be here. And that comes in here. And then that, the original, you know, there's a Lake Shore Street sign or post here that, you know, people were cutting through, that, that's the same spot where Tailwind Circle is approved.
Okay, so when everyone was taking the shortcut coming up River Road.
Right.
Where did they come, they came up River and took a left?
They would've come in here and it came in here.
Okay.
And then it would turn up. So, so I guess, I, I think what I'm hearing is then there's options, there's something that can be done, you guys are willing to look at something more specific as a proposal.
I think the question then comes, once you create the road and the frontage, are you still grandfathered or then are you kicked into current day? And do you lose two lots or need a variance first? We'd need to get the opinion on that. I think that's probably the one unknown.
Yeah. Wait a second, say that again?
So, because Priscilla Ave is not a road right now, so he doesn't technically have frontage.
Well, it's an unimproved road, right? Because isn't that, it's the same road as MacArthur is.
Correct.
But the MacArthur site isn't short on the square footage, these two lot, two of his three lots are short on the square footage.
But Priscilla Ave is a road, I mean, I think it's existing.
You're calling a right-of-way, it's a paper street.
But it was a.
Paper street.
But it was a street in existence, well, we don't know this, prior to.
Yeah.
We'd have to, that would give.
It was laid out in nineteen forty-three.
Prior to the subdivision control law being in effect in Norfolk.
So, therefore, would be an identical circumstances on MacArthur.
Yes.
But MacArthur's doesn't have the issue. I'm, I'm just concerned that he loses two out of his three sites because of the square footage, which is not a condition of MacArthur, so it's difficult to assess whether it's.
Then why would he lose two out of his three sites?
If, if he doesn't get a variance.
The minimum area.
How, how close are you to, to the requirement in terms of square?
Minimum area for the lots.
You're two percent off or you're twenty-five percent off?
Why?
No, no, no.
This one's thirty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-one.
Because they don't currently have frontage, they lose that exemption of fifty feet of frontage. The frontage has somehow gone away between the time when the lots were approved and now.
I'm not gonna take you on, Gino, I know better, so.
Well, you know, they.
I mean, normally grandfathered lots, provided, that's why they sell them off, if they're not in common ownership, they exist in perpetuity.
Right.
I don't know the issue of, you know, when did the frontage disappear? I guess we're making a finding that he has to do something to provide frontage, so I guess in that context, the frontage isn't there. It was there because they approved lots at one point in time, but.
Okay.
Entirely sure, right?
Well, the frontage is, is, is one issue, which he seems to have accomplished. The question really is the square footage of the lot. What's the requirement and how close is it?
What our district is, it, R one, two, three?
If it was on a public street, they exist in perpetuity, even if they're substandard in size. What happens if it's on this situation, I don't know.
The existing non-reforming lot.
Correct. So, did it, did it lose that status?
That's what, a hundred and fifty and forty-five thousand?
It's two-hundred-foot frontage, forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square foot.
How close are you?
Required, so.
Thirty-eight, mayor.
We're at thirty-eight, five hundred and twenty-one, we're at forty-three, nine sixty-six. This one makes it forty thousand six hundred and sixty-six.
Wow.
They are close.
But, 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 and, and I, and I see that, another challenge. But, but I'm not.
You can fit the circle in, right? Did you try fitting the circle in? The required circle?
No.
Oh.
Two-hundred-foot circle, but if that's two-hundred-foot frontage, it looks like it's, yeah.
Yeah, it should be.
Is it two-hundred foot, is that what you said was the district?
Frontage.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the circle's a.
Also.
Two-hundred-foot circle, yeah.
So, it should work.
That should fit in all three.
Right.
Might not be deep enough.
Yeah.
The what?
The middle one.
Might not be deep enough to get the two-hundred-foot going backwards.
Might be part of the variance.
I have a scale.
So does he.
Oh, yeah.
I've never seen so many guys carrying scales as hard as I have tonight.
It's a status symbol.
When are they gonna put that on smartphone?
It's a back-scratcher.
Oh, Bob, you're still here. Were you interested in this one too?
No, I just, I, I've been working with.
It's the same thing. This is the same thing.
Actually, I don't have a scale.
What's the dimension?
And this one is all trees.
I'm gonna get a two-hundred-foot.
Vertical dimension of.
Really, you know where all the, you know where all the roads are in here?
From, from, say, here to here. Um, a hundred and sixty-five feet right there, it's, um.
Oh, it's that?
Hundred and seventy-five there.
Now, this is gonna have real frontage on this.
So, a hundred and, just shy of a hundred and sixty right there.
That would be part of your variance.
Yeah, you should, people would like to see that.
Couple of variances and a few waivers here and there and it's all set.
Little pixie dust on top.
And then you can go the road.
In trees with no, with, like, this is planned view. How bad is, how bad is the road construction? Any worse than the lot construction?
Well, again, I, I don't know, I guess you guys are open to seeing more. I think is, is my reason to be here tonight. I'm not gonna be able to answer anything specifically, yeah, there's challenges, grades and widths of road, you know, again, this is forty feet.
Is Donald Road a road?
Nope, on paper.
Yeah, yeah, I remember this conversation, yeah.
Yeah, which means you have to go all the way to River Road?
I actually was, I, I, I was emailed this plan and I remember looking at a photograph of it. And it, it's just all green, it's like, you can't even see paths through there.
I get lost in here every time, 'cause I know this area from assessor's maps, where there's all these roads. Where, where do I turn?
Yeah, I remember this when there was talk about the airport project and that, that Donald Road was a path people would, you know, walk through, but I'm not sure if it's overgrown now, but.
And I think Chris said that the, the cartway isn't in Priscilla Ave, it's kind of in the general area. Makes sense.
Get meanders.
Is that wetland area?
Right.
Yeah, that's how Boston got built.
Yeah.
Washes away the gravel?
Is a big rock in the way, so you're making the.
Well, which is why I say, you know, a, a cul-de-sac maybe, 'cause it's not, probably, probably, that is another challenge, this wetland won't allow a through road.
Oh, boy.
That would probably stop that. You know, can a, can a road be proven that it works and then, and then a, a common drive allowed for access to something? You know, or, or just, again.
These are the same questions we get all the time and we, we usually have the same answer. We've kind of already said.
So, Mike.
You have to get your frontage.
So, I should be watching this more closely, see what happens here and use that as my template for, for these.
Well, it will be different, there are different hardships over here, over there, than you have. You know, they, they have the hardship of the slope.
But we're still requiring the frontage, I mean, some of it, yes, is precedent that you should look at, 'cause some of it's applicable, you know?
But the chance of you getting the, the twenty-foot wide road?
Yeah.
Probably not, it would probably have to be.
It's close to forty.
The town standards of twenty-four feet.
Well, that, that's, that is the precedent, is that you use today's standards and you try to get as close as you can. And then, and then it's how many, it's how many, you know, how far are you deviating? And that's, that's the discretion of the board, 'cause it's, but you try for the, you try for today's standards.
Certainly.
They can't make it, they're at twelve, they got a twelve, you know, percent grade.
Right. And if I took a piece of land and subdivided it and did my own things, it would, you'd, you'd make it work. When you walk into a plan that someone made this long ago, we wanna make the best of what we've been given.
But you, you start at the standard and then you show the deviation.
Yep, makes sense.
You should check the subdivision approval for Norfolk Landy too, 'cause I think there was something, some language about the, the cart path becoming a trail or something like that. So, it might, that might need a modification as well if it, if that were to go.
Which cart path?
That goes along Priscilla.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm aware of what you're talking about, I, I, because it's further along and what we need to do, I'm not familiar with even where that connects.
I thought we turned cart paths into road, roads all the time.
It, it was something.
Unless they're off.
I, I think, I think the cart path might have been on the property.
Well, wait a second.
It might, it might have been when, 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 when the cart path that was acting as Priscilla Ave fell off of the right-of-way and came onto the property, I think that's what we were talking about at the time. I don't think we were talking about off-site.
What about this?
Yeah.
Priscilla Ave.
Remember that?
Is, I guess a, at least this part of it is, is a private road. So, therefore, it's not accepted by the town, it's not maintained by the town. Don't you own both sides of this for the most part?
Not here.
Not there, but.
Only halfway, here halfway.
But who owns the other side of it? Isn't that you are the project?
This, yeah, this is us, so.
Did you talk to that owner?
So, Sarah, who has the well here.
It is, it's Sarah.
Sarah Del Mastrom?
Has rights to halfway in, as, as I would understand. Same thing.
Willing to take water? Or, can you provide her water or something for? I'm just trying to find a way for you to almost connect with, well.
What does it do for?
Gets rid of the, the road and could we find a way to connect to the other project?
You're trying to get the square footage, you're trying to get the.
Well, pick up, if he needed square footage and possibly.
It would push it into the wetland, though.
He would lose frontage if he didn't have Priscilla Ave.
Yeah. Can we find a way to connect it from that other project that you have? I mean, again, this is purely. I mean, again, this is purely back of napkin stuff.
Brainstorming stuff, yeah.
And can we connect to, I forget what you call that project there, I mean Norfolk Landing.
Your new Cubs.
Right, and.
Yeah, this Norfolk Landing is the project name, and Tailwind Circle is the name of the road. I love throwing around the ideas, I don't think that particular one works to, to have this absorb anything else, you know, that's, it's, it's certainly been chopped off, if I'm understanding your.
Well, what he's saying, I think, is, is do a deal with her, provide her with water, and have her sell you that, that piece of property. It separates your two lots there. You gotta bring water in there anyway, right?
Yes.
And then you don't have a road in between you and Tailwind, or what, you know, Norfolk Landing. And can you find a way to connect to those lots somehow?
Well, it doesn't look like, it, it looks to me as though the only way they get frontage is by putting a road in. Where, where else would they get frontage?
Could it be part of the existing tail, um, landing project come in for modification to it?
They'd have to.
Rearrange their lots.
Rearrange the entire Tailwind.
You'd have to get frontage on the new Tailwind Circle, so you have to redo all the lots, so you could do that.
You could look at it, if you want.
As opposed to taking undersized lots, getting variances for circles.
Well, you know, this, this is a legitimate hardship, though. This, to me, is a legitimate hardship. This is not like the hardships that most people do, they create their own hardship, and then they try to get a variance. This is a legitimate hardship. Okay? I, I, I would think that if you're gonna get a variance, this is the type of thing that you would get a variance for.
If we could support that as a planning board in front of the CBA, then that would be great. I mean, if that's the way the, the board's thinking.
And not at this point, it, I mean, there's, there's a whole lot of questions.
But I mean, on a high-level discussion basis.
Yeah.
We're trying to give the guy a lifeline here, you know, we're not promising anything.
Well, I mean, lack of, lack of square footage is, can't be, can't be created where it doesn't exist. But, I mean, if the road can't be constructed, then it's just a theoretical argument at eleven fifteen at night.
Yeah.
What, one important issue is the board gonna require a cul-de-sac at the end of this reconstructed road? If you do that, there's no place to put it, other than put it on one of the lots he's getting. It blows one of them out of the water.
You don't go Lakeshore to River Road?
He said there's a wetland that prevents a through road.
Why is it a cul-de-sac if Priscilla Ave is a road?
Well, they're close to the wetland, they're not in the wetland.
Does, does it dead-end? It connects with River Road there?
I thought he said he couldn't connect it through because of a wetland.
Well, the wetland is.
In the middle, and he was gonna have a. Well, I know that's a wetland, but are there other wetlands that prevent you from extending that through?
I'm only aware of this.
Okay.
Is that, that's not, that's not physically, you're not actually gonna pave over the boundary, would you?
That's the boundary, isn't it?
Yeah, you're, you're saying you're gonna be within the buffer zone of a, of a wetland?
If you tried to go all the way through, you, you can't go all the, I don't, I believe this would prevent a road from going all the way through, so we'd have to come in.
Well, that's not necessarily true.
Well, it's a vernal pool, it's not just a wetland.
Oh, is that a vernal pool?
Yeah, there's a big deal with Norfolk Landing, the Concom negotiated land around it and all that kinda stuff.
Vernal pools have a buffer zone?
No, under the local bylaw, not under state law.
Not in the, that's WPA.
Was there a twenty-five foot no-build zone?
Oh, it was a hundred, I think.
One hundred, no-build, it's a hundred-foot review.
No. No.
Jesus.
Well, that sounds awfully high.
That sounds much higher than, than the state. Yeah, that's.
Have you heard of that? That, that there's a, a no-build.
No-build in a hundred feet?
For a vernal pool, it's, it sounds familiar, yeah.
Wow.
Run, run the.
It's a state statute.
It's a state one?
That's correct.
Oh, no.
Really? No-build, one hundred feet?
Unless it's considered a taken. And that means if it's your only option, you might build a survivor, but generally speaking, it's a no-build.
Well, it looks like it's the only option. It is the only option.
How did I miss that?
Well, you said, no, it's not.
I don't, I don't believe it is, under sta- under state law, no.
Well, in a way, it's something of concern enough that you have a lot to talk about.
Yeah, you're gonna have to check that out with.
Put that, put that on your list of pros and cons.
With a Concom for that. And you probably shouldn't do a lot of engineering on, on the roadway until you find out about those lots, whether or not they're, you can get a variance on them. 'Cause we can't do anything about undersized lots or lots that don't have the required circle in them. That's a variance from the zoning board of appeals, it's not something that we can do. We can't, we can't call that a lot if it doesn't comply with zoning.
Is the required circle a planning board reg or zoning board?
I think that's zoning.
It's zoning.
Yeah, zoning, yeah.
I also don't know whether the zoning board will hear it if it doesn't currently have frontage.
I, I agree with that, it sounds like a chicken and egg.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
But that idea about maybe doing a deal to get water in there would give you that extra small lot, which would help solve one of the two problems you've got in terms of square footage. I, I don't know whether that's practical, but it's just an idea you can work with when you go back to your drawing board.
But the, if this vernal pool actually restricts pavement going through, um, they don't, they don't have a road, they don't have road frontage on that lot. So, 'cause you, I mean, those are, those would be really long cul-de-sacs, like, that'd be striking if, you know, for the board to approve that.
Yeah, you're at five hundred feet to this end to the beginning.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was a different scale.
And then here, sixty scale. Here to the first property is three hundred and forty feet. Here to the end of the second property, seven hundred, but the first, you know, in, in theory, the first two hundred feet to get frontage is this one here, so we're at, uh, well, five sixty there to the end.
Is the right end there, uh, River Road, is that a throughway right there, or is that paper?
Uh, this?
Yeah.
This is an existing paved way.
Yeah, you've driven down there many times.
I'd question if you could get that other cul-de-sac.
When you get in that whole little wagmire.
Oh, I know.
Or perhaps one here, and it only gets one lot. It doesn't meet the square footage.
I know, you don't last your only, well, it's not even truly, I mean, you don't really keep one in one. Well, but then you use the lot, the, the lot that you can't build on, you use as mitigation for the variance issue. Not that I'm in the zoning board of appeals member or anything, but that's what I would do. Open space. You, yeah, you donate it to the greater good.
Thank you, Park. Park and Park.
It's kind of, kind of what, kind of what the landing did.
You guys use Scott Garden, right, as your wetland?
Um, who?
Scott Garden, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, he'll be a warranty of there and wash.
So he's got, the lots are, the lots are less, but the, but the town open space is greater, and maybe they'll look at that.
And then you could, you could join the, the, that, on, if you don't build on that middle lot, you could join it to the open space that's associated with the vernal pool.
And that could.
Create a bigger amenity for Norfolk Landing.
Or for all of us.
And, and, yeah, and the surrounding people.
Okay.
All right.
Sarah, I'd like if you, for you to put the walking trails through, too.
Have we covered just about everything?
It's a tough one.
Probably never.
It is a tough one. Looked easy at first.
Well.
He said he brought the easiest plan.
Yeah.
The simplest one.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thanks a lot.
Is Norfolk Landing gonna sort up something?
We're currently there.
We're at eight forty-five. You're here for seventy-seven Rockwood Road. It's a little after eight forty-five. Yours shouldn't be hard.
That's a good stick.
These have all been difficult tonight, you've been here all night.
I have been here all night.
At least since eight forty.
That is correct, yes. Um, I'm here, I came here approximately two months ago to change the configuration of the lot and to have it comply with an estate lot.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
This lot was approved and is buildable, conservation, et cetera, as this in front of me. I've been to Conservation Commission, and they have amended the order of conditions to allow. This to take effect. At my last meeting, Jeff would ask to make sure that appropriate amount of trees, because of the trade-off of this.
I did that for Andrea.
You did that for Andrea?
I did, that was welcome back to the planning board.
I went to the Conservation Commission, several pints of blood, um, to the degree of trees, retaining wall, more trees, fence, removal of garage, shifting of building, um, and I can honestly say to you that they turned to the abutter in the audience and asked the abutter if he is now okay with this plan, and he said he was fine with this plan.
Which, which about?
That's correct. This gentleman right here, no, this gentleman didn't show up.
It was further over, wasn't it?
This house, well, if you look.
Yeah, yeah.
This house was actually another thirty feet.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Are we looking at the right plan?
The house was way over here.
Yeah.
Took the garage off, moved it over this way.
Yeah.
Okay? Um, then your question was, make sure I do more trees?
Time out, time out, we're confused, we have different documentations.
You should all have the same plan, just different scale. That's all it is, a different scale.
Oh, it's a different scale.
It's all it is, different scale. Same exact plan. I wanted one with a bigger scale, so you could easily see it.
Thank you.
Yours is a smaller scale.
We all have our reader, oh, you don't have your readers on.
So the difference in the plan that you saw the last time I was here approximately two months ago, if I can remind you, you said, go to the Conservation Commission, it seemed as though my issues were mainly with commit, that commission, my, probably my most headaches would be with that commission, I went to that commission. Um, and in fact, um, they asked me to put this wall in, why? So that we could do an almost no-touch zone in this area? So that way I can plant trees, and the only reason I'm gonna disturb this area is to plant the trees. Other than that, all this has to be natural.
Well, the other thing is, it's also.
This wall is approximately three feet high. If you see, we broke this line here, we added more trees, more trees.
It's also upside down.
And now these trees in a no-touch zone right through here. Okay? Um. I felt when I removed the garage, we've got an opinion from, uh, from the building inspector that these retaining walls are not part of the setback, so we were able to slide the house over far enough. And then the fact of taking out that twenty-four-foot garage, we picked up, we're now substantially further away from the wetlands. The building is completely out of the, even the hundred-foot setback from the wetlands. I'm only doing some grading. The Conservation Commission stated to me, and I was hoping that the chairman would have stayed here, but I certainly didn't ask him to, but, um, he stated, plan well done, and very receptive. And like I said, I have in my folder, which is right here, the amended order of conditions.
I have it as well.
The, so I have a complete approval from them. Um, like I said, uh, this is for my son, this is for his first house to build and sell. And, and it's been a long road for one lot.
What did you do with the, without the garage, you put the garage under?
That's correct.
Yeah.
The house is relatively high, we presume, though, we can probably lower the house, because when Mr. Domey was here, he did a groundwater adjustment, it was probably pretty high. Uh, but we're not sure, um, so we decided to put a garage under, and that allowed us to shift the house further this way. There's been a lot of study done here. Um, and frankly, I will be the first to admit, I think from a neighborhood standpoint, it's a good thing. It works now. When the neighbor actually stated to the board, I'm happy, didn't come to the last meeting.
Yeah.
And as you can see, and I don't think they gave up, I didn't see them here tonight.
Now, you say, which neighbor came in, Ryu or Fosse?
The best one I've seen, this came, and he, I don't think he ever showed up. This person came and said, quote, end quote, and then.
Well, we had a letter from.
Yeah. And said he was happy with it. Did the letter say he's not happy with it?
The original letter, before you changed.
Yeah, yeah. I've done it, I've, I could tell you, I've, I've beaten this horse to death.
I, I remember this, and I remember we talked about which way the house should face, we talked about shifting it. So if you've gotten to that point where you're satisfied, these folks.
I think, it, it, you know, I didn't think the, the old plan was all that bad, myself. But, you know, and I see no problem with.
Nine states you broke.
Well, yeah, I know, but, you know, these are, these are far apart. There's, um.
What is that distance?
I, I could, I could tell you, um, we've located this, we've, um, my son has been here every couple of days, either going out there and looking at things, et cetera, et cetera, he's put a lot of time and effort into this. I don't know what else to say to you, other than we have, we have got over our bases.
Oh, absolutely, it's better, I mean, all we're looking for is, you know, like, does it comply with what our regulations say for a, for a, for a, estate lot?
Yeah, I, I think when I was in compliance, it's just, I had to go to Conservation to make sure that that.
That, that was the issue, was Conservation.
Yeah, we got over the compliance thing early on, we looked at that, um, and, and I'm still in total compliance, I haven't done anything different, other than to say twenty-five foot, and, and I say no-touch zone, I've said specifically to the board, and they understand, I have to plant some trees in that area. So it's not no-touch, but it is a three-foot plus-or-minus wall, so like, there's a lot of area that will be a no-touch area. It's just, I, I was very abrupt with the board, saying, I have to plant trees in that area, unless you don't want trees there planted, new trees, and they said, we'd like to have the new trees, and we understand that you're gonna have to go in that area. So, um, I've broken up the line of sight, I've put them up as they go, because I didn't wanna just plant them down here, I wanted to plant them on the slope, so that way they're high enough, I thought if I went to this board, you'd say maybe, hey, those are down there, not up here, and you're still gonna see the house. Well, you're probably still gonna see the house when I'm planting them up on the slope, too.
Yeah, and they'll grow, sure.
Exactly, so, uh, I, then, then the last time I went back to Conservation, which was a couple of weeks ago, I forget, they added a fence. Or they asked me to add a fence, which I did. This plan is a specific plan that's referenced, this is exactly what's approved, the amended order of conditions are fine with me.
Is it a construction fence?
It's an erosion control fence.
Yes, and if you look at the red line.
Yeah.
Uh, that's hay bales, et cetera, et cetera, it's an erosion control all the way down to here.
Okay.
It's enormous.
And what is this, is it wood post and rail fence?
That's great, and I tie it to the wall, down like this, and down here.
Oh, so what, what is that labeling there?
Oh, that's just a fifty-foot buffer, I'm doing nothing over there.
No, it says wood post and rail fence.
Yeah, that goes to here, see the line, there to here. So it starts here, ties to the end of the rock, stone wall, comes like this, like this.
Oh, with a little, you can see their little round posts there.
Okay.
That's so Conservation wants to be able to say to the homeowner, don't go on the other side of the post and rail fence.
Yeah, that's fine. I didn't see the, any line connecting it to the.
Walter, you, you have any comments on?
No, I think it's, well, well.
It is the old plan.
Yeah, that, that's horrible. This new one is so much better.
When my son looked at buying this, I said, that, that is just crazy. There's got to be a way around that. I wouldn't have gone for variance. I'm on the zoning board of Fields in Mashpee, and I was concerned about the ability to go for variance, but this already approved. I didn't know what I was going to put up for hardship. But frankly, that's crazy. That doesn't make sense to me from a planning standpoint. I mean, you're coming out to this street, which is a much busier street, the length, an easement, it just, just doesn't make sense to me.
Yes, Peter, do you have any comments?
I saw it the first time I drove it. I know the neighbors. This is the most sensible way to go about this. If this ever came on Rockwood Road.
Absolutely.
It would have been a disaster.
Michelle, do you have any comments? Jeff, you? We may be able to actually.
I have a plan. See if you.
Does anyone want to close this and?
I have no other issues.
Sign a plan?
Single family house lot.
Yeah, right. Right. Oh, that's right, we do. It is a special permit, yeah.
Because the access is not, what?
Because it's a.
Estate law special permit.
It's an estate lot, yeah.
So we need to, we'll issue a decision for that, I think, before you can endorse it, right, Gino?
Yeah, just leave this with you.
Yeah, leave it with me.
Do you want to act on this?
Do you guys have any comments?
No?
Great, we'll take care of that at the next meeting, and I'll get that over to you guys, so.
Is this something that you guys were looking to break ground sooner because we're not?
I need to take, my son needs to take the lot down, so the sooner the better would be greatly appreciated because to go to a bank.
What do we have to do to at least get it approved and then, the same way as we're going to handle?
Yeah, what I can do is have the decision drafted before you have your, oh, no, you're no longer going to have that meeting. You're already, you're going to endorse the plans.
Right.
So then, then you, you need to have a, a meeting to review the ready decision.
Do we want to have, try and have a quick meeting before the fifteenth?
In one of those, of one of those ones that's supposed to be a quick meeting and it turns out to be a really long meeting?
What if we do it on a Saturday morning?
Forget it.
Did you actually take a vote at all today?
No, they're going to though. Just trying to decide our strategy. They're going to close here.
Yeah, we will vote to close it.
Want a motion?
Yeah, yeah, a motion would be good.
I'd like to make a motion to close the continued public hearing for seventy-seven Rockwood Road, eleven Stacy Road, estate lot special permit.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's closed. We'll have a decision.
If we can find some way to get together and just get the decision approved and signed.
Tell them to take a look.
When you don't actually vote to approve it.
We have to, we have a decision. We have to sign a decision. So we have to go over the decision line by line. Before we release it.
My son's probably going to be approaching me to fund this until such time as he gets bank funding. So I just want to make sure that funding it makes sense on my part. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I have to, yeah, I know. That's true. My, but I, I just hate losing that type of money. So.
I'm not anticipating a problem.
I, I'm not anticipating any problem. It looks like.
No.
Thank you for all your time.
Thanks for your patience. All right.
Thanks for listening to the board. I mean, you.
I listened, and my son's learning, and he says, I wish he wasn't sitting in high, in college right now because he should have been here doing this. This is what it's all about.
Seriously? You're doing this for your kid who's in college?
Law school right now, Suffolk Law, and he's, he's going to be a developer, and this was his first lot.
Excellent.
And I've been in front of this board three times now.
Excellent. He's a nice, he's actually really nice to deal with, so.
Well, thank you. I, he better be.
Ron, before, before you leave, you made any further progress on Frederickson?
Yes and no. It's not an easy situation, but yes, I'm, I'm in the midst of that, and I'm hoping to move forward on that.
Just curious.
Yeah, I'm hoping to move forward with that.
I drove down Frederickson. It's not as bad as it's been described.
You know, I've driven down there. I'm, I'm, I think it's pretty bad, actually, from an access standpoint. I'll be, I mean, again, I don't, I don't pull punches. I tell you the way it is. I mean, you drive down there, it's, it's kind of tight.
It, it's tight, but it's not as bad as I was expecting it to be from.
It's, it's tight. I, I would hate to be the, I mean, certainly the person who lives very close to the end. You know, fires, fires, you could have a problem down there someday. I wouldn't take very much. Wouldn't take very much. But it needs some work, but I, I'm working on it every day.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Steve, you want to find a time to, to get together before we move on to the next topic?
Well, we're, we're back on to new old business. We're just on business now, nothing to do with any hearings.
Well, no, I mean, we need, don't we need to sign the, sign the decision?
Oh, oh.
That's what I'm talking about. The one that Gino's going to crap.
Oh, the one that Gino's going to crap? Oh.
We can talk about that after.
All right. Let's move these people along. Is this a twenty-four hour car wash?
We need a Saturday between now and equal fifteen.
Well, Mill River. Is, is there any?
What's that?
Well, no, we're not going to get through all of it. We're just going to try to get through the part with accepting bonds and lot releases and, you know, cottage car wash, establish a bond, yeah. Yeah, we can take it out of order because they're not hearings.
Uh-oh.
All right. Where's the bond for the car wash? Is it here?
Yes, that's the one you had earlier.
Yeah, yeah, that's the one I pulled out. That was the only one that looked like a bond. All right, so driveway trench drain system, adjust the castings, drain line video inspection, hot mix asphalt replacement.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this was the site that was paved in December that the board.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
They got their last batch before they closed down.
Yeah, but it, the binder cost held up quite well. There's a small area near the site entrance that's going to have to be replaced. But there's an area that has to be leveled up sort of along the edge of the site. And we threw in allowance here for hot mix asphalt replacement leveling and a berm pad along the edge of the site, so.
All right. Is it, anyone see any problem with this? You guys all set with this?
No, I don't, I, I.
Larry, can you grab a mic and introduce yourself?
Good evening. My name's Joseph Mitchell Jr. I'm here representing.
Excuse me, you're not Larry.
I am Larry. I go by Larry, so.
You, you know me as Larry.
So most people know me as Larry.
I know the way it feels, by the way.
Trust me, Tom.
I think I was confusing you with your dad, that's all.
Yeah, yeah. It wouldn't be the first time. Anyway, I'm here for Michael Braybenson Cottage Car Wash. I kind of got involved in this at the last minute because what my client is actually seeking to do was, and thought he was going to be able to do until recently, was to get a temporary CO and condition upon his, you know, maybe for whatever the board would, would be amenable to maybe a hundred and twenty days or something to that effect where he could finish up what needs to be done. The items that are on this list are items that he is obviously intending to complete. They're just, he's physically unable to do it now because of weather restrictions. That's his problem. But he needs to get open to start, get this business underway. He's losing a lot of business. We ran it to people here tonight that said, you know, when he opened, we, we went to another place. He's ready to go, and that's what he was seeking and asking for was a temporary CO could be issued and conditioned with the, whatever conditions you, you choose, whether it's condition on him complying within a hundred and twenty days and having it, the progress reviewed or monitored by the building inspector or whoever, whoever you choose to do that. And, you know, if, if, if hopefully that would, that would be all it would take, I would think. And if, if there were problems with that and he wasn't able to comply, they would have the option of extending it if he was making progress or revoking the occupancy, at which point that would be on, on my client.
I, I, I think that's, I've, I've gone through the site recently to check it out, and it's, you know, purely serviceable at the, at this time. And, I mean, we've done temporary COs before. We've done them for landscape building, done a share with David. We did it for years for the Norfolk Senior Center. I mean, this isn't, you know, a safety issue or anything else. It's more landscaping, curving, and raincoats, things like that.
A lot of that Rick can talk to, but my understanding is it's, you know, because of the frost and no, no asphalt plants open at this point that he's unable to, you know, he's, he's willing and ready to do it. He, he wants to get this thing done and oval as so that he can, but he needs to, he needs to be operating.
I mean, obviously, the CO is going to be dependent on the building inspector. If we give him the go-ahead, where does he stand on that?
But I know that he's a little hesitant on the COs of, of projects that have, you know, a list of things like this because we've been burnt in the past.
I did have a conversation with him at six o'clock tonight, and he's actually fine with issuing a, a temporary CO.
Oh, oh, okay.
I went by last week to check, check it out. I was more curious than anything. I went through the place and I asked them these issues, and they were concerned about that. And I said, listen, we have to give the okay to the building inspector. Where is Bob Bullock on this? At that point, they said, here's the items that we need, but short of that, I told them, make sure you get in touch, Rick, with Tom, work out the cost to complete, and if it was something that, you know, the board can consider. And again, if you look at these items, they're more, you know, outside landscape.
Does it look to, to you so, a, a good timeframe is June thirtieth?
Oh, you mean how long?
Yeah.
For the temp? You guys, ninety days?
We can work with that.
Yeah, it's a hundred, hundred and five days, so, yeah.
Rick Goodrow with United Consultants. Obviously, there's two big things that need to happen. The vertical granite curb in the front of the building, which they're having a difficult time due to the frost. Once that's installed, then the asphalt will be repaired and the top coat will be applied along with the berm. And then the landscaping, striping on top of that will all fall into place. We don't want to have the castings raised, the trench drain installed, because it has to be done to the final asphalt grade or we're resetting them twice, considerable amount of cover. So all that work is, you know, kind of dependent on the asphalt paving. We expect that to take place sometime in the middle to the end of May. And that's basically based on the asphalt companies coming out when they open their plants, and their workload is going to be mainly roadwork coming out of the gate. They're not going to come and want to. The pavement was in, we couldn't put the landscaping in. Now we need to wait until the appropriate time to do the planting. So I, I think by June it will certainly be very close, if not finished. I think that's a reasonable timeframe.
You just addressed the, the only concern that I think I had was with the traffic signage, so if you've got some temporary signs or what have you.
They actually.
I actually know somebody that pulled in there and tried to use a card thinking that was open and then asked me what's going on. I said, well, as a matter of fact, what are we talking about?
Actually, I was a guinea pig. They were testing out their bio system because they reclaim, what percentage? Ninety?
Ninety-eight percent.
Of their water, but they have to have, like, kind of a septic system. It has to have enough feed going on. So they were actually pulling people in just to wash, just to activate the, I don't know, the bugs or whatever.
Mike Braybenson Cottage Car Wash, we've washed probably over the last thirty days about three hundred and fifty vehicles. And we do that for a couple of reasons, to tune in the equipment, number one, also to build the biological colony that we have because the products we are inserting in, into the wash is what the, they actually eat. They, they break that material down. So it's a very green, very, you know, earth-friendly system. So we've washed about three hundred and fifty cars, contractors' cars. We actually even washed one of the fire trucks, believe it or not. I think it was E-one we washed, which was a E-four-fifty pump truck, and we were able to get it in there and wash it. So at this stage, we're, we're paying for all the electrical, we're paying for all the gas, we're paying for all the other items that we need to be open, except we just can't open on a revenue stream. And I hate turning customers away that are pulling in. And on Sunday, I was there, I think we had fifteen folks come in wanting to wash your car. And, you know, I don't think that's a good reflection on my business when I have to turn them away. So my goal is to get open and be service to the community. We certainly want to finish all these items. Again, as Rick said, I, I don't feel it's, we, we want to finish it, we, we, we can't.
Okay, I think we're convinced. I think what we're going to do is we're going to do what you asked, and we're, we're just going to ask you to have all the items that are on this list, that is listed on the cost to complete that was submitted by PSC on three seventeen to, two thousand and fourteen, to be completed. And if someone will make a motion to the effect.
To be completed by?
Well, no, I'm not making the motion. Someone else is making the motion to complete it by June thirtieth.
Okay, you did, that's what I wanted. So you can make this happen by June thirtieth?
Yeah.
And if not, you thought you were getting tight, you'd have to come back to this board?
I would either have to come back to the board or the building inspector, whatever you would suggest, and maybe ask for an extension if it was something out of our control. But I, I would totally expect we'd be able to make that date.
Well, then pursuant to the cost to complete provided by PSC for the Cottage Car Wash, thirty-six Pine Street, total estimated cost of complete construction of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. I recommend that we notify the, we accept the cost to complete and notify the building inspector that is, is okay to issue a temporary occupancy until June thirtieth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Hanging in there, guys. Long night.
Mill River, do we have to do it?
I knew it was Larry.
Betsy, do we have to do Mill River tonight?
No, because.
We don't have the bond.
Oh, oh, okay.
Hopefully see you next time.
All right.
April thirteenth.
Fifty.
Fifteen.
Take that one off your agenda, and you guys can go home.
Maple Park Estates A and R Plan? Why would there be an A and R plan in Maple Park Estates?
Do you know?
They're just adjusting lot lines.
Oh, oh, that's all it is.
Nothing, not a big deal.
Is it worth us doing tonight or can, that we put that off?
Well. Are they trying to hawk loss? I mean, what street is it?
If you can just, if you're okay, just to prove it.
Is it Essex? Is it?
Well, Gino has to tell us.
Hampton Road.
Oh, is that it there?
Yeah. Though it's better to see. He did it on two sheets, and that's the one thing I don't quite understand because, as you can see, there's a little bit of it on this sheet, but it's all, that same part is on this sheet. It all fits on one sheet. But he's just, there's a little sliver here that's, that's moving from one lot to the other. There's a fifty square feet going from one to the other there, and a thousand square feet going from one to the other here.
What's the reason for these moves?
I mean, this is an approved subdivision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's something to do with the size of a lot and the health insurance, because it's, is it in the zone to the public water supply, Gino?
Tom, you know anything about this?
It may be, but that makes sense because now this one is fifty thousand square feet.
Yeah, they needed ten thousand square feet per bedroom.
Per bedroom, right.
Yeah, this one goes over, oh, no, this one's still under.
Okay, that makes sense. I mean. I remember Park Street always was.
Anyone have any issue with this?
I just don't understand why they do that.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Because if they, if they want to put a five-bedroom houses and they only have forty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy feet.
They're only allowed four bedrooms.
Four bedrooms.
Four point nine.
So put another way, if these houses weren't built and we had these plans in front of us, we would approve, this would be, what, an A and R? We wouldn't have to do anything, right? I mean.
Right.
It is.
It is an A and R.
It is an A and R.
But it's a change to.
Yeah, but to your point, if it was, if they were designed this way in the original subdivision, they would be fine that way too, so.
Right.
Then I'm okay with it if that's.
Okay. So do you want to make a motion to endorse the Maple Park Estates A and R Plan?
I would love to make that.
Dated, what date?
January thirteenth.
January thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen.
Make a motion to endorse the A and R Plan associated with Maple Park Estates dated, what was the date?
January.
January thirteenth, twenty fourteen.
Okay. All those, oh, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We can sign those. Okay, I don't think that we review two forty Dedham Street site. Nope, forget that.
Where's you go on that?
My only concern is the, decisions have to be filed by April seventh.
Then get an extension. Can you get an extension?
Can we, can we have him grant us an extension?
You could vote to deny it unless he gets a letter in granting the extension by, by such and such a date.
Yeah, there's an incentive, yeah.
So, so has PSC been contacted yet?
Gino putting the hammer down.
All right, we, we better do that because I don't know what it's going to take to.
So they haven't contacted you to come down there and inspect it?
No.
Well, we're waiting, I did talk to Hugo. We're waiting, he is waiting for Dunn McKenzie to do the ASBIL plan. Just before Tom can.
How can he do an ASBIL plan before it's inspected?
Yeah, you can have it inspected without the ASBIL.
Isn't that a waste?
Well, Tom has.
No, no, it, it's a method of verifying what was put in compliance.
Supposedly, if it's.
If it does.
Right.
Which hopefully it does.
All right, so the.
And Dunn McKenzie is working on it, so I did tell, I did express the need to get this done and into us so that we could take care of this in short order.
All right, let's, let's skip over.
I spoke to Hugo three months ago. That was the same story then, Dunn McKenzie was working on it.
We, we're going to do that. We're going to say, if you don't get this and to extend it, we're going to, it's going to end up being denied.
So why are we skipping over here?
Well, well, didn't we just decide that that's what we were doing?
Yeah, we have to take a vote.
Oh, oh, okay.
This is lightning rounds.
It is lightning rounds.
Steve, you need to take a vote here.
There's so many things here that we have to look at right away, and it's, we've got ten minutes. So, quick, make the motion.
I make a motion to notify. Notify the, who is it? Hugo DiMartino regarding property located two forty Dedham Street that the. Notify the, who is it? Hugo DiMartino regarding property located 240 Dedham Street, um, that um, the site plan and special permit?
Uh, the site plan modification?
Site plan modification. And will be.
And, and special permit.
And a special.
And special permit will be denied by the planning board, um, unless the planning board is in receipt of a request to extend um, the deadline for um, our final, um, our final, final action endorsements.
Well, we should, we'll have a decision, right? Or is it already done?
They're drafted already. It's just waiting, yeah.
Well, we're not gonna look at it tonight.
And we need that prior to April 7th. We need that?
Yes.
Betsy, we need to.
We need an.
Planning board needs to be in receipt of that request for extension prior to April 7th.
What day of the week is April 7th? Monday, I think.
That's okay, I'll.
Yeah.
So, April 4th.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
On or before April, well, April 4th is a Friday. April 3rd, April 3rd, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we could skip over the town meeting warrant articles, okay?
Well, we do need, we need to.
We could schedule it.
We need to schedule a public hearing.
It has to be two weeks before town meeting, right?
When's town meeting?
May 5th?
13th.
May 13th?
Really?
Second Tuesday.
Oh, I thought it was the 5th. Oh, no, that's the elections is the 5th.
So, we could do it at our next meeting. Right? Haven't seen any kind of draft warrant. Is anybody?
Yes. Oh, no. No.
No.
If they have a, I mean, they're gonna have advisory board recommendations and things like that, wouldn't you rather have a, have a leader?
Well, you want it somewhere around May 1st?
I think that would make more sense. I mean, in the past, we've done it almost right up at, we've done it the night of.
Yes. There's always been a public discussion beforehand.
So, two weeks before, two weeks after our April 15th meeting is April 29th and that's exactly two weeks before town meeting. So, we have to meet.
So, we have to meet the 29th?
We have to meet the 29th.
Is that, is that gonna be enough time for us to uh, have the meeting? Is, is that gonna fit within the schedule?
Yeah, she'd have to know now because we won't have enough time in our next one to set the public hearing.
Right.
It's only two weeks.
So, do you think that it's uh, soon enough or should we have the, the hearing at our next meeting?
She hasn't even seen the warrant articles yet, so that's kind of unfair.
Well.
Yeah, but if not by the 29th, we're not probably gonna meet.
They will exist by then.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm saying the 29th makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, let's try.
Well, it does, but you know, what, what happens if all of a sudden we realize, oh, well, we, we shouldn't have counted that day. It, you know, we're off by a day or something, right? Because you said it's exactly two weeks, right?
No, it doesn't have to be exactly two weeks.
I thought it was more than two weeks before the town meeting, right?
We've done it the night of before.
Yeah, the only thing is.
You have to advertise.
We have to have a hearing.
A, a public hearing. If you don't provide a report, if you have, if you don't provide a report, um, wait, there's a 21-day thing. Um, the, the planning board has to submit a report to the town meeting or it cannot consider zoning articles. There can be a verbal report or written. Traditionally, it's written. And that can be at town meeting, right up to town meeting. Um, but this is 21-day.
But we have to hold a public hearing for all zoning articles.
Yes, you have to have, you have.
And that, the date on that is two weeks before town meeting? Is that what it is?
No, there's a deadline.
Are you thinking about advertising requirements?
No, no, I'm not.
No, Steve, we can run it right up to.
Yeah, I think that's true.
We can have the public hearing the night before?
You, theoretically, you could. Not a good idea, but.
I mean, the 29th works because it's two weeks before.
Well, all right.
29th?
If I was an error.
I got my calendar on.
Going twice.
So, all right, yep. It's, it'll be the 29th then. Hope Gino doesn't send us an email tomorrow saying, oh. If anyone can post a meeting, you know?
Yeah.
If, if a quorum shows up, you can add that meeting. So, it's not the end of the year that we all didn't decide.
Just tell me now, okay.
Okay.
Okay, let's do our CPC appointment.
Oh, let me tell you about the CPC zoning, okay.
Well.
Zoning article.
But I, I'm just gonna, we know that, that Andrea has been covering the CPC for a long time and uh.
I'll make a motion to appoint her as a CPC representative.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Great. So, for two, I actually haven't been going to CPC meetings, um, not being a planning board member. Um, the, yeah, for the next three weeks, I can be CPC representative. Um, but the CPC has brought through a warrant article, um, on that warrant you haven't seen yet, to have the community preservation funds be used in conjunction with a state agricultural grant to purchase the development rights of Jane and Paul's entire farm, except for, except for their house lot and five acres they choose to keep separate. So, they had put 28 acres on the market, which is the old, um, homestead across the street.
Right.
Um, and uh, two weeks after, um, you know, I decided not to run, Paul called me and said, um, you know, you've always said you'd be interested. We'd like to sell the farm. So, we brought down the state who said, great farm, wonderful farm, high quality for agricultural restriction money. We, we introduced the farm to, I introduced the farm to the Trust for Public Lands, which is a, a national nonprofit. And Board of Selectmen created the Jane and Paul Working Committee, so I've been working with, as their representative to do this. Um, so, well, not really. Rob Gary was on the board. So, um, there is a written offer between the Trust for Public Lands and Jane and Paul to sell the land. The Trust for Public Lands doesn't hold land. They, they don't hold it permanently. They don't buy land and, but they, then they put in, they are the project manager, do all the due diligence on the sale. Um, they put together the agricultural restriction grant and this warrant article basically says that the state and the, the state and the locals will buy, will buy the, um, the value of the land, based on an appraisal, which is being done, the value of the land to, from its highest and best use to what it can sell as a farmer. So, we take off the development rights, put a, um, permanent restriction on it and then TPL sells it to a farmer. Stays a farm. We pay nowhere near the value of the property, um, and we don't manage the, and we don't have to manage the land. So, that's happening. Can you specify which chunks they're gonna retain? Yeah, I can. Um, and, um, the, uh, the Trust for Public Land Project Manager is more than happy to come in and discuss this in detail, but we figured at a public meeting, we should wait till the, um, purchase and sales over with. So, here's Cleveland. Here's, um, you know, secret. Um, so, here's Jane and Paul's home.
Yep.
This is the older home that's still in the, the Newton family.
Yep.
This is the 28 acres. This is the 10 acres that you guys created. Seven and a half acres has been sold. Um, it's gonna, it's to some kind of landscaper. The two.
Chris Colas, from Walpole.
These, yeah, I heard he's from Walpole. These three house lots are not sold. That's all separate. 28 acres, all of this, all of this. Paul and Jane asked for five acres and it's probably gonna come off of this end. So, when the farm is sold to another farmer, it's gonna have the, the apple trees, the blueberries, um, all.
Corn fields.
The cornfields. And, and one of the reasons Ag likes it so much is because it really is prime agricultural soil.
Yeah.
So, the working committee discussed other uses, but, um, the, you know, when a third party came in and said, we can make this happen for you for, you know, a whole lot less money, there was no really, there was no better option. So, it's happening.
Sounds good.
Sounds wonderful, actually, really. Because it'll continue as a farm.
So, what's the, what's the town's end? Do you have numbers yet?
Yeah, but I can't say in public session because it hasn't been.
Finalized.
The purchase and sale isn't finalized and it's based on an appraisal, um, that it hasn't been finalized. It's kinda like guesswork, but the guesswork numbers, um, were brought to the, the estimates were brought to the, um, Board of Selectmen in executive session and to CPC. Um, it's within.
Do you wanna start with this?
Sure, I'll come around.
The Board of Selectmen feel it's within, it's a, it's a good financial deal, given everybody's involvement. Um, the CPC has the money in the bank. It's not, it's not any amount of money that, um.
So, you're not like bonding into the future?
Not bonding into the future.
Okay.
And it's not using up all the allocations. There's still, there's still more funds left.
And it works out.
So, when I'm not on the planning board, I can actually get things done.
It works, good job.
Okay, does anyone wanna make a motion to, um, in this hearing?
The never-ending hearing?
Oh, no, that was an old one. I pulled out.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
If you wanna.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.